Like all of all this meeting.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by a notice mail to the Hopewell Island News and the Trattoria Times posted on the bulletin board in Borough Hall and filed with the Borough Court as required by law.
Pledge allegiance to the Blackberry of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Kennedy?
Here.
Ms. Hope?
Here.
Mr. Mackey?
Here.
Ms. McCullough?
Here.
Ms. Steeler?
Here.
Ms. Weaver?
Here.
Ms. Wender? Ms. Williams?
All right, welcome everyone, both online and in person to our November Borough Council Meeting here in Hopewell Borough. Couple of things as we start got a busy agenda here tonight. And I know this has been a difficult week for for many of us. I have every confidence in our community that we're all going to work together for what is best for our borough, our state, you know, and and our country. We may not, and especially even tonight, all agree on everything but what we believe in common with each other greatly outweighs the differences. This place in town is part of an interchanging kind of American government experiment, and I'm proud that we fill this room each month with dozens more people on Zoom. We put our meetings up on YouTube, we share the agenda itself by email, our administrator and I and many others here in council are available offline very regularly and easily. As the issues we tackle get harder, we'll do more of this and not less. The conversations are hard and the tasks that we have to confront are challenging. But we'll continue to have an open table here in Hopewell Borough. The issues we face in our borough are not partisan and locally they're very different from what we see nationally. But we'll continue to tackle them together, red and blue. And for our, I'm thankful for our staff, our professionals, all the volunteers on this side of the dais and our boards and committees and and everyone in our community that participates in this meeting. We are lucky to have this level of talent and engagement in our town. And while it is not easy, it is, I believe, uniquely Hopewell. We will continue to embrace and utilize and foster that engagement and collaboration and everything we do as much as we possibly can. That end, we got a packed meeting tonight with many speaking opportunities, and I want to do our best to keep it open, moving and and organized. So a couple of different things here, we have several ordinances that are on second reading. So that means that the topic for that discussion will be specifically when we get to one of those items that have a specific hearing on that. And if you have a comment about one of our ordinances, particularly the the changes to the Hopewell fifty seven redevelopment ordinance, the appropriate time for that would be when we do the public hearing on that ordinance a little later this evening. I've conferred with the council president Weaver who will be running the meeting though. And this is a little nuanced and we'll do our best here, but I understand that that public hearing is pretty specific to an ordinance that changes, I believe, only a few items in the redevelopment plan. And that general comments about the the redevelopment should happen during the regular comment period and I'll announce that when we when we start that. We also have some guests, if you are Comcast cable customers, a representative from Comcast here is, we'll start in a few minutes with a public hearing on their request for renewal for their cable franchise that will also have a public hearing associated with it. And then before we get to that, we will have provided some representatives from our business community to to talk a little bit, to make a statement about the the recent water bills and water rates. So with that, hopefully helpful background about how the meeting is going to go and what the speaking opportunities will be, both on on Zoom and and here in person. I'll go to item four, which is the report of the Director of Public Works and Water and Sewer. If anyone has any comments for our administrator or professionals on that, now would perhaps be the time. Seeing none, we'll move on to our two discussion items. And you recall, I've been following as we've been on this journey the last couple of months, at each meeting, we have a set time where we're going to do an update on the potential sale of our water system. Later this evening, there will be a resolution in our consent agenda for approving what's called an RFQ, that's the Request for Qualifications, which is the the next step in trying to vet possible interested parties for the water system. Doesn't mean that we're going to sell it to them, doesn't mean that they have to provide us yet what their proposal would be. But the first step in attempting to get proposals about what they would propose to do for our system and for us is to qualify bidders. And we have a document that we will be putting out if it's approved by council this evening to do that. We have a lot of other water updates that are probably more appropriate for council liaison reports that water committee has been quite busy with things from reservoir to talking with other towns and updates on on some of our other progress. But David, Chris, unless there's any other sale related thing worth noting, maybe I'll we'll move on to the next piece of our Q. Next item we have for discussion is, I got a request from our business owners to speak about our water rates. I know a lot of people in this room were involved or here when we made those difficult discussions this past spring. Our commitment as a governing body is to revisit those as soon as we can with as much input from as many people as possible. So with that in mind, I'd like to invite Clark Reed or someone else to be speaking for the business. But if you don't, I'd like to walk you up, introduce yourself and 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 yield the floor to you for a few minutes.
Thank you, Ryan. Do I need a microphone or?
No, we're trying to train the camera on, we're making progress.
Just put your administration's capital improvement card.
It was a impulse personal Prime Day purchase from Amazon.
Yes, nice.
So there you go.
Barry is my cohort partner in crime, he will be joining me shortly. Good evening, everyone. Clark Reed, twenty seven East Broad Street, Hopewell, lifelong borough resident, future member of the cemetery on the hill. You know, look, I I, before I read what my statement says, I I want to say that I had a great meeting with Doug, it was very productive. I talked to Ryan extensively, I talked to Dave, our long haired water guy extensively. I was at the water meeting with David, had his great presentation in July. And I I was hopeful that we could kind of muddle through this, you know, whatever it is. And and the businesses, when this latest round of bills came out, personally, obviously, I was astounded with them as I reached out to Barry and Nathaniel, who's here with us tonight, the laundromat guy, and sorry, Antimo has whatever, Antimo had bronchitis and Otto was supposed to be here, but I don't.
Oh, there he is.
Otto is every night there. And so some people are watching online and have bronchitis and other things, but so the restaurant owners that live in town have met, we would like to express our extreme dissatisfaction with how this entire water business has been handled. There are many factors at work here, science, economics, neglect and others, but we do not think we should bear the brunt of any of it. We paid our water bills in good faith for years and the new rate is simply not distributed fairly. This is very simply unsustainable for the restaurants and we as a group as of right now are refusing to pay our water bills. Whoever came up with this rate was certainly not an economist because restaurants operate on a fifteen percent profit margin. And when you think about how much business you have to do with a small, to make a small profit, it is not fair what you are asking us to burden. If you continue down this path, you will have more vacancies on Broad Street. Nothing for you in this town to do in this town of ours. It is not our underst- it is our understanding that two hundred and fifty out of eight hundred homes signed a petition not allowing the water system to be sold without a vote next November. Several residents have told our mayor that they would prefer to pay more to keep the water system private. Why don't we let them? If you divide whatever our backlog is from the, sorry, if you divide whatever our back cost is by the households, it's like two hundred and thirty five dollars. Why are we punishing people who are providing a convenience in our town? Hopewell Borough is already known as a difficult place to do business and this certainly will drive away any potential suitors for the empty storefronts that we currently have. In consuming water, the restaurants are servicing servicing the community. If this is the council's approach towards the restaurants, we must request that we pay New Jersey American rate for water and not a penny more. We have no interest in being vested in this town who is so clearly not vested in us. I am standing here representing all of these businesses because I currently do not have a business myself. I do not want any backlash on these people, but I'm mad because personally, some of my water bills have gone up four hundred percent and there are no leaks in my buildings, which is every single day. Several things to examine, sorry. Several other restaurants have experienced the same thing. Otto's bill was up by four hundred percent. Barry from the Peasant Grill is the best case to examine in my belief. His water usage, and that's an error, I apologize, it was seventy nine, not eighty nine. His water use was seventy nine before the water meeting hike in July. He knew he was going to be charged more, so he read in his employees the riot act. His water usage then went to one seventeen. This is most, this most recent quarter, he was closed for a week, which he never does, he was my tenant for fifteen years. He never goes on vacation, but he did this last quarter. And eight percent of the water, the quarter with no water usage at all, his most recent bill, one thirty three. This is simply not possible. That is a, not thirty five, that is a forty percent increase in water usage while being on vacation and also being vigilant. These bills just make no sense and we cannot, will not continue like this. What is oddly consistent is the rate with which all our bills have gone bonkers around forty percent, as if someone has fabricated these numbers in order to make up for the leak. What we need is a separate category for restaurants and around the laundromat. There will be a cap and residents must understand that these places are a part of the community, are not using any more water than they did before. If the council chooses not to retroactively adjust these water bills, I will make it my mission to walk Broad Street, I have the time, we all know, and recruit all the hairdressers and anyone else who comes to believe, I believe, that has water usage and those businesses will join our protest and not pay next quarter's water bill. And the hole in your budget will grow much larger. There are more than ten of us currently and we have fifty thousand dollars in your water budget upcoming tomorrow. This is your mess, you let it happen, we'll do your watch and you can clean it up. You're not going to put us, our livelihoods in in the restri- retribution. Thank you, Clark Reed. Thank you, Clark. Barry, do you have anything to add? I think you said it all. Okay, well, that's the first.
I'll depress our this on my own behalf, appreciation of of all our businesses and restaurants do for our community. We were faced as a community with the how to allocate costs and our commitment was and continues to be that we will keep relooking at the best way to to allocate those. I I wish there were magic tools in our quiver to change things significantly for where we are now. But the data you're providing, I think, helps us understand where we can go in the future. And the future is very soon for us in revisiting how the rate should be allocated. We'll continue to work with each individual owner and restaurant. Some of the, there seem to be several buckets of issues, one is just that the rates are too high, you know, that we have to collect more money than we'd like to. And that is not new, not a surprise to us unfortunately. And we're doing everything we can, both grants exploration and looking at the sale of the system to bring the rates in line. You're correct that you'd be paying a lot less if New Jersey American were running our water system. We can reallocate things as between the smaller residential users and the businesses and we will continue to look at that and look at that before the next bills go out. My understanding is that unfortunately, we don't have a lot of statutory tools to help people out on a short term basis. Everyone should make their own decision about what they do with their bills. I don't believe we have the ability to waive the statutory interest or unfortunately, you know, there's a set course of things that happen when you don't pay taxes or bills and we don't have a lot of options to waive or or change what that happens. I'm not an expert in how that works, we'll continue to look at it, but my understanding is that there's not, other than the automatic interest that comes with not paying taxes or bills, there's not a lot that we have available to to do to on that. But our commitment remains as it was when we set these rates, to look at every other possible way of doing it. And I I personally believe that you you made some good points about how the rates are allocated and that we will look at that, you know, very soon in in, you know, the next, it would be in the next month or two, so that it would be reflected in the next bills. And we've looked to to do that, that would have been frankly, our plan to revisit it anyway, but ultimately the input that you're providing is extremely helpful in that. And I I mean both generally, you know, there's three perhaps issues here, you know, there's there's the rate, there's the amount that we have to raise and that there's all probably on an individual building or business to business basis issues or things that seem to be out of whack and we will continue to make our resources available to help figure out, you know, if it was a leak, if something's broken, something like that, we will assist to to do.
Yeah, let me just say one thing to try to clarify for Ryan. There there are, you're right, but I just want to clarify for everybody in the room, there's three things at work. There is the sale of the water system, we're not talking about that.
Okay.
That's completely different and and that's more Dave's than everybody else. Then we have the raise in the in the in the rates, okay? And that, we're not arguing about the raise in the rates, we all knew the rate raises were coming, we were here, we were. Then we have this separate third animal that has weird, ugly head, which is something's going on with the water system and either, I mean, I had Dave come to my buildings, he, I asked him to take the meter, right, and this is two separate meters in my building. And I was like, look dude, we went from a thousand dollars to four thousand dollars. We went from a five hundred dollar water bill to a seventeen hundred and fifty dollar water bill, okay? Look, I had Sean Lanning come out to my buildings, we went through the whole thing and he's like, there's only way that you could be using that amount of water that you're talking about is if the PSI changed in the water system. It's not physically possible to to even to waste that amount of money, right? To to have that kind of, and I asked Dave to tape the the meters, which he didn't do, but I asked him to take the meters and get them tested. And he never, he never got back to me, only twice. But so there's really three things going on, there's the sale of the water system, which this is not about. There's the water rates, which we understood, and then there's something wonky going on with the system in that Barry, me, Otto, four hundred percent, me, four hundred percent, it's, sorry, Dan.
Right, so that's the nuance, which, you know, is, I'm Otto from Otto Burger. That is disconcerting to me because the rate itself seems to reflect what we were presented at the earlier meetings. But just for context, you guys remember Brick Farm Market, which was a very busy operation? The highest use as we went back looking at the bills was around one thirty. And I recall that, I was a part of that operation, it's when we had a seriously leaky toilet. And then it went down to ninety, eighty-five, hundred and five, around a hundred. Our first quarter at Otto Burger was thirty, which probably included some low use weeks. But our current usage is a hundred and ninety, which is a sixty percent increase over the highest ever bill that we've experienced with a leak. It is a six hundred percent increase from our previous quarter.
Sorry.
So I, you know, I just wanted to raise that nuance because the rate increase is one thing, but it is a scary concept to be, and you know, this is not an accusation, but something's going on, to be compensating for things by tweaking tweaking the usage reading, so.
Well, I mean, what else? We'll stop you there, if that's possible. And I'm going to tell you something else, meters do not overread. They can under-register, but mechanically it's impossible for them to over-register. Second, our pressure in our system is determined by the elevation of our reservoir above the town, which as far as I know, nobody has changed.
Right.
So it's not a pressure change, it's not the meters.
So what do you think it is?
It's the only answer, the only plausible answer that I know of. And I I understand you guys have looked at this, is a leak on your end. Whatever happens downstream of the curb stop is your responsibility. Now, Clark, you just made this claim that you walked through this whole thing with Sean Lanning. I, Dave Masnick called him and he told him that you called him and told him not to come. So I, did you call him back and have him come?
Sean Lanning, I don't understand this.
I mean, I'm getting a completely different, we work with Sean Lanning all the time. Absolutely. And and I mean, I, I mean, I, so known for a year. So you're, I'll call him tomorrow because I want to hear what he has to say. Because, trust me, this is, I don't know of any plausible explanation in this physical universe other than a leak, whether it's a toilet or something else or somebody irrigating you didn't know about, somebody using your hose bib that you didn't know about, there's all sorts of different things that can happen.
That will cost four thousand dollars?
Everything, the volume is what we're talking about, the rates have not changed. Okay? The rates are exactly.
So I I have, what you're saying is I.
Clark, let me finish, okay? The rates have not changed, okay? We build based on the readings, Dave Masnick's been working for this town for thirty seven years, he knows how to read a meter.
Yeah, I don't doubt that.
Again, and I asked him, I confirmed this with him today, I said, is there any possibility that a meter would over-register? He said, I've asked this question a million times to people in the industry, different manufacturers, the answer is invariably no. And if you think about it, it's like, like the odometer in your car, you can't make it over-register. It's just the way they work, they can stick and they can stop reading and they can under-register if something jams up, but they don't go the other direction. So, I mean, as Ryan said, we'll certainly look into this, but I mean, for the evidence that I've seen, there's nothing that we can, our responsibility ends at the curb stop and the meter, okay? So whatever's happening on the other side is something.
So I had a leak, Otto had a leak, Barry had a leak.
I can't tell you what the explanation is, I can just tell you that.
Come on.
Are you actually suggesting, because you're literally suggesting we are intentionally changing these?
You feel persecuted, is he feeling persecuted? Because that's how.
No, no, I'm I'm asking you a question, are you absolutely seriously accusing the borough of fudging the numbers to get more revenues, is that what you're saying?
I'm asking you, you feel persecuted, does the businesses feel persecuted?
This piece of paper is accusing us of manipulating the numbers.
I think that's unfair, right? I mean.
I mean, are you, do you honestly believe that would be all of us in concert with Reggie, Dave Masnick, literally committing fraud? Is that what you are saying tonight?
I I'm saying that my bill, we have about four hundred percent, his one up by six hundred percent, we have.
Answer the question, yes or no, are you saying we're committing fraud?
We're not in a court law.
I think, I think, wait, this is, this is an unacceptable thing, an accusation to make in public with no evidence. I'm sorry, I'm I'm, it's just unacceptable. It's your responsibility to figure this out, we'll work with you whenever we can, but to suggest that the borough is in some way manipulating these numbers to generate revenue is just utterly and categorically false. And I won't sit there and just smile and say thank you for your comments, it's just unacceptable. So.
As is my work. Sir, this is, this is not a contemplation of like on accusations, I, you know, I'm going to speak for my, I'm going to, I'm going to speak for myself, I'm not accusing anybody of anything.
Okay.
Okay? I am respectfully asking for you guys to see our side. So this is the first bill after all of these discussions happened, right? And so there was talk of rate hikes, we were super careful, I can personally say, checked for leaks. There aren't any, so the bill comes. It is six hundred percent what the previous bill was, so. So I am here today as a, not in, not not as an accuser, this is not going to lead us to, you know.
Right, let's lose, I agree.
I'm here asking a question.
Right.
And first we were like, okay, maybe this is just a mistake, but yes, we did consult with with Barry and you know, and Clark, and there's like, yeah, all of our usages have gone up, so.
Antimos.
What, what do you think could be happening? Now, I know your resound answer is, that's your responsibility, but you know,
Well.
forgive us for the implied concept of something is happening, but you know, that's kind of where we're at.
I'll I'll tell you that what you've always done in cases like this, and I'm sure what Dave Masnick is doing, is is working with people to walk through their property, see if we can find an explanation for it. I mean, he can tell you it's hundreds, if not thousands of times, that he's gone into somebody's place and found a toilet that's been leaking for, it's an unbelievable amount of water that comes from leaking toilet.
Four thousand, it's not possible.
Let me finish. Actually, it is possible. We've had people who've had bills double and triple, literally because of one toilet with a bad flapper valve. And as a matter of fact, one of them happened to be in apartment of yours a few years ago, Dave was just telling me about that today. This is very common, that's why we hand up those dye tablets upstairs and encourage people to look at these things. I'm not saying that's the explanation in your particular case, Otto, but there are all sorts of things that can happen. People have soaker hoses, they have timers that fail, they have all sorts of irrigation stuff that fails, there are a million different things that can happen on the customer's side of a connection. So I'm not saying that the borough isn't willing to work with you and examine these things, obviously we will, this has always been a part of the service that we provide. I'm simply drawing the line when someone suggests that we would be anything other than honest in how we account for this and in reading these meters, that's the only reason why, you know, I got a little agitated.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense to me either, but you know, I've got six bills in my pocket.
I got it.
The highest ever is still sixty percent lower than this one after the debate has stayed in place.
Usually, I mean, I'll just to add, and and I I did my best to look through some of these histories. You're, to your point, Otto, yours is particularly unusual in that it was very low and appeared that I would have expected it to be more closer to historic, to be honest with you, I have no idea why that's the case. I want to make sure I have this next piece right though, but this is not the first bill under the new rates, this is the third, third, the second.
Second, second, second bill.
Yeah, because it was Mark Twain. And you know, in some cases, it's it's hard to reverse engineer, some buildings, it's one meter for the whole building with multiple tenants in in some cases. Some went down a little bit, some went up a lot. And but I I I think as it always had, would be and has been, and I think, I hope the takeaway from you guys has been that, you know, not only would we do this, but we have been, we don't have any answers for you. But that, but then and well, so.
Well, we're very concerned about this as well. So what we've been doing is Dave's been going out periodically after you guys reported, you know, the bills and we're taking, we're taking readings every four or five days.
Let me ask you a question, just, you know, and these are not estimates, but I'll use the term, if if my previous quarter was so grossly underestimated, is there a scenario where this was corrected, like is it catch up type?
So, well, so I'll 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 answer that because.
And you know, the question is if, if.
Right, right.
It's it's on my end, so so an over-usage can be explained by a leak, but what is an under-usage explained by? So that's a flaw in the system and you know, that's kind of the inquiry here.
Right, well, let me, let me explain that. So I actually asked Dave that specific question today and I sort of knew the answer, but I just wanted to make sure we had it right. So I'm not sure about your particular system, but mostly systems, you have an actual meter, was it the physical meter itself? When usually it has a remote, I don't believe, I think in the case of, I think in the case of yours, Clark, it may not have, but I know, for example, my house, there's a meter inside. And then there's, there's a, it's wired to a remote reading unit that's external to the building, okay? In the past, we had sometimes had problems where the remotes weren't registering. So what would happen is they go to read the meter, they read the remote and it's not showing the full usage for that for that quarter. And then at some point, when they read the meter, the actual physical meter, they find out, which the the actual physical meter always captures what's what's going through it or less, in other words, if the physical meter is damaged, it's going to read less. But it it it's not like it suddenly starts moving and it catches up for what it lost before, it simply either comes to a stop or it slows down, you know what I'm saying? It doesn't speed up later on.
So you're applying a different type of reading took place, a physical one versus a.
In in the past, we had a remote reading that was sometimes under-reg, I don't think this has happened for a long time, I asked David about it. But the way we always resolve that is you go and physically read them, it's the first thing he does when there's a question, he makes sure that he reads the actual physical reading on the meter. And I think there's no question in this case of what their meters show it. And so. Um, and so, um, but that wouldn't explain an increase, that would be an under reading, right? And the consequence of that for some people in the past when that used to happen was they would get a lower than normal bill, and then at some point, someone would read the actual meter and they would be billed for that usage that was legitimate usage, but it wasn't, it wasn't on their pay. So they would suddenly get a surprise, and I wish your bill's fifty dollars instead of two hundred and fifty, and the next time you get a four hundred and fifty bill.
Would then, would usage be, be split up after a leak to the different quarters or?
Right, but, but, you know, but the total usage doesn't change and it, but, but that's not, that doesn't explain this. So what I'm, what I'm trying to point out is that just, um, the, the meters themselves, um, and again, please absolute about this. Um, they don't under register, they don't, I'm sorry, they don't over register, they can only under register. And so that's, you know, when we have a problem with them, it's because they, they get dumbed up in scale or whatever, and they start moving properly. So, so that doesn't explain it. Um, I, Dave is very, very good at walking people, at finding things like this. I mean, we just had this sort of problem over and over again, and he very often spends time on, at their request, on people's private property, finding problems that literally they should be paying a professional to do, but he does it. And it's part of what the borough has always done to support our customers, individuals and businesses. He is also one person, and you know, he doesn't necessarily have the resources to do this all the time. So I think if, if possible, I would suggest that you have a good plumber to do that work. But we will certainly support you on trying to find a solution. Um, I, I just, again, I, I want to make sure that we're focused on the actual physical solution and not some conspiracy idea that we're somehow, you know, cooking the numbers, uh, it just wouldn't happen. So, um, but you know, the other thing I would be aware of, and I don't know anything about the configuration of your system or your plumbing or anything, but I mean, I had a friend recently who, um, has a business and he, there's a hose bib on the outside and some of his bills were going up, but he found out that somebody next door was washing their car all the time and just hooking up their hose to his tap. Uh, you know, he couldn't figure it out, and then eventually he realized what was going on, and somebody was just like, oh, there's a hose bib, I'll just use it. And it was on his meter. Um, and I don't know that. Yeah, we're, we're, this evening tonight, with the volunteers up here and you guys, we're not gonna get to the bottom of why yours went up from thirty three to one ninety eight, which is baffling to me, to be honest with you, just baffling. Um, or yours, Clark's, or why, uh, you know, Chubby's went down a little bit somehow, or, or Barry's went up like, you know, twenty. We're not gonna get forty percent, we're not gonna get to the, uh, sorry, your, uh, eighty four, what's, what's your dress number?
I can't hear you.
Sorry, which, uh, it doesn't matter, I, I was pulling up some bills as we were discussing, but it doesn't really matter specifically what it's. A few went down, a lot went up, there's a, a, you know, well, our commitment is to continue to work with you guys to figure out what that is. And also at the same time, um, look at what our rates are, so that if, if this were to happen again, say it was a leak or some problem or some other reason, that you wouldn't bear as much of it, because the rate should be perhaps different. And our commitment is to look at that too, um, with an understanding that, um, if we needed to raise X dollars to support our system for next year, that the amount that comes from you guys is the, I'm, what I'm hearing and, and at least speaking for myself, should not be the same percentage of you guys bearing that brunt, and then it unfortunately has to roll further, I want to say downstream, but to residential customers more so as well.
Is that like an actual commitment, or is that just like, is that just, are we actually gonna have these percentage differences gonna be addressed?
Hold on, so, wait, wait, let me, uh, um, just to keep this meeting working, um, positively in a way that, that functions, if you could.
Sure.
Come to the front.
Sure.
Um, introduce yourself, um, uh, this is a, one, one second, you know, we, we offered an opportunity for Clark to, to make a, a, a brief presentation. This is not a full public, um, hearing on this, um, but, 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 and I'm not, I'm not stopping anyone. I just wanna let the rest of the room understand that this was a, an opportunity afforded, uh, to, to our businesses to, to, uh, have a, a more concise discussion, um, with this, uh, and that we'll be opening the meeting up more generally later in the evening. So with that, you know.
Let me finish up, and then I'll let Nathaniel take over, because I just have two things to say in the board before I sit down. Number one is Dave is sixty years old, and he's about to retire. And as I see it, that's, that's gonna be a major problem. And for our water system, our, our DPW, everything going forward. He's a knowledgeable guy, as Dave said, and filling his shoes is gonna be a big problem. Someone who's educated, you know, needs more certifications than Dave has to adequately run our water system. Number two is, I've lived here my whole life. In the summer of two thousand and four, after my dad died, I was back in California and he had a leaky toilet. Okay, fourteen Hamilton Avenue, and I came back and the water bill was five hundred dollars for a leaky toilet for, I was gone for three months. Okay, and I was, I flipped my lid, I was like, oh my God, that's insane. And I came to the old borough hall in the firehouse and I, I was made of four shells time. And I was, she's like, you got a leak, you know, so I fixed it. So now, if we have a leaky toilet, right, a bad flap, a fifteen percent piece of rubber, you're telling me it's four grand?
It's gallons, we're talking about gallons.
Okay, but still, there's eight hundred houses, and I don't need to put more pressure on you than necessary, and I know you're working hard, and I know everybody's only in charge of what they can be in charge of, but with eight hundred houses, eight hundred families in this borough, and if a family has a leaky toilet, they can't go on summer vacation, or they can't put money into their kids' five twenty nines. Four thousand dollars for a leaky toilet? I mean, come on, like this is, this, this is the economic position that this borough finds itself in, and it's a shame, and I know you guys are working hard to resolve it, and we need to speed things up, we need to get this done, and we need to get it resolved.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
Thank you very much.
I mean, absolutely, and, 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 I mean, and Barry, you know this, every time I see you, I say, when are you gonna come and talk to us? Because we're not, we, we heard from all of you, restaurants, not all, maybe, but most of you, when we had the public hearing about raising the rates. But some of the other public discussions and presentations we've had, we haven't had a lot of, we haven't heard that much from the businesses. So I'm, I'm glad you're doing this, I'm glad you're bringing this and putting this into a critical focus for people, so that other people in the community know just what's at stake. Because honestly, my fear is too, that we're gonna be driving businesses out of the borough, I mean, there's no question about it. Um, and, um, anyway, I'm sorry, I'm talking to you.
No, 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 and you know, I, I don't even know that I'm supposed to be up here speaking at this moment, and we're just talking about percentage increase rates.
Right.
And.
Your name is?
Nathaniel Davidson.
Yeah.
I'm the owner of the laundromat.
Right.
The whole laundress.
Yeah.
Um, so if that's all we're discussing, I, my rate increased a little bit, but I have usage that probably quantifies that. So I'm not really, I'm just wondering like, because you were just mentioning again, an increase potentially increasing in prices and saying that it will be adjusted to homeowners at this point, and maybe this isn't the time to be bringing this up, but, but I just, I don't understand like why this wasn't distributed more to homeowners before, we're talking about a previous leak that now we're, we're picking up the burden on, um, it's a huge burden. I mean, the water system's been failing for a long time, so it's, it's, you know, I don't know all of the, the details to it. I don't attend the meetings regularly, I haven't been here for a lot of years. Um, but I'm just wondering, like, because if, if we keep hitting these sixty percent increases in our water bills, like, yeah, that's for a homeowner, if we split it up over all the homeowners, it's, it, it's not that big of a monetary difference. But when we're talking about bit large users who are bearing the brunt of this, and we continue to drop these hammer, or whatever you wanna call it, these water bills on us, it's just, it's not even unsustainable, it's, it's ludicrous, it really is. I mean, I don't know how we're supposed to run a business in, in these kind of environments. The rates we saw per, per unit are not, that American Water charging are nine, nine dollars, I think, per unit, and we're paying fifty five.
Well, no, that's, that's not exactly correct, but if there, that's, that's about nine dollars per thousand gallons. You're paying fifty five per thousand gallons, but I will say, if you do a side by side comparison, as we have with New Jersey American rates, this all varies by usage, but for you, okay, for somebody using a hundred and twenty five thousand gallons a quarter.
Right.
The, the difference is between New Jersey Americans' current tariff, if we run their tariff right now, and what you're paying, I think you're paying about sixty percent, I'm, I'm sorry, no, you're paying more than double. Okay, you're paying more than double what you would pay to New Jersey American, um, it's probably about a hundred and twenty percent. Um, um, a typical homeowner is actually, most of the users that are in the ten to twenty thousand, they're, they're paying quite a bit more, they're, they're, they're paying, the, the, the delta is not quite as much, but they're still paying a great deal more. They're basically, everybody's paying at least double what they would be paying to New Jersey American. The only people that are not are the people that are using less than two thousand gallons a quarter, um, who are paying a lower rate just for that, well, everybody pays a lower rate for that first two thousand gallons, because that's just kind of the essential whatever we need to, to live. But, um, but that's generally speaking, and, and again, we're gonna have another presentation on this at some point, we soon. Um, not about where we are in terms of working toward the sale of, of the water system, but also the economics of it, not only for businesses, but also for the town. And, um, but you know, there's a chart that I put up in my presentation, I did, I don't know, months ago, and it was a side by side curve basically showing New Jersey American versus what everybody in town is paying. And that's basically the difference. So, um, you know, if we were, could magically be on your tariff today, or if you were literally outside of the borough, you know, down the road, you'd be paying a rate that would be less than half of what you're paying us right now at your level of usage. And that's just, that's just unacceptable, I mean, you can't be at that level. I mean, everybody agrees, which is why we're doing what we can, uh, to, to sell it. Um, as for shifting the burden, um, I will tell you, and we've agonized over it, and we're, we're gonna revisit it again because we should, but it's, the, the dilemma is no matter what you do, if you, if you, you know, essentially shift the rates, move the rates down from one group, you're adding to another group, and how you do it, and, and you know, there's all these different arguments, one is, well, a business can pass on the cost to their consumers. Well, we all know that you can only, how many quarters is gonna be gonna put into a machine, right? There's, there's no way that works. Indefinitely, right? And then somebody else says, well, homeowner can't pass on that cost, well, that's, that's all part of it. But the fact is, there's no magic answer to this, there is absolutely none. And, and everything you do to shift that rate structure hurts someone, uh, and maybe helps someone. Um, we're, we're going to look at it again, we've had discussions on the water supply committee about it again, to see if there's something that we can do to at least alleviate some of the burden on the business community, being the high users where you simply don't have a choice. It's not like you're out irrigating a lawn every day, right? You have to use this water, and you're the best example, your business, because of what it is. So we absolutely understand that, it's, it's why we're moving toward trying to arrange for sale the system if we can. Um, and, um, but it's, it's terrible. And, and, um, I, and I'm, I'm so sorry that you all have to go through this, that you have this on top of all the other stresses and burdens that you have trying to operate a business, and your business in particular is, is very valuable to a lot of other people in terms of cost of living, because people that don't have laundry machines, they come to you. So when we talk about the cost of living in the borough for people, you contribute a great deal toward that for a lot of people, so we're acutely conscious of it. Um, but I'm very glad you're here talking about it.
You know, it just seems like we have, we have the group of two hundred and fifty individuals who got together and have formed a committee, almost it feels like against us with this water pact. And I don't know, you know, from your perspective or whoever's perspective, if, if that's the case or not, but as the business owners in the room, it kind of looks like we're getting forces joined against us on this, and then we're seeing the results of these hikes, and it's, you know, it's, um, like I said, it's just not sustainable, so when we're talking about future years and adding on and more time and more time, sure, for the homeowner, that's no big deal. Their rate increase was very minimal, I mean, uh, twenty, thirty percent or whatever it was, you know.
Forty, yeah, forty to forty five percent.
But I mean, we're talking about how much over the year.
Right.
You know.
It's, it's a percentage of a smaller number, it's of, of a percentage of their overall income and homeowners' costs, it's much longer.
Right, it was like twenty percent of my income probably, right, you know.
And, and what are, um, look, I, I, to one of your points, I'll just say, I think everyone in the borough has the best intentions with why, why, what their motivations are, uh, and, and, um.
But again, like.
Pursuing or, hold on, uh, pursuing or, or opposing a sale, and we'll, we'll get to that in, in the coming months. Our commitment though, from, from this side, as, as the volunteers running the town, is to get that information in front of everyone as soon as possible, so that the community can make a decision at the next election, um, on whether, uh, and have something, uh, concrete to consider, uh, and yes or no, uh, approve i- in November of twenty twenty five. That's unfortunately at the moment, as fast as we can.
I just, I guess.
We can also do, one, one, one more, one more second, I'll get it back, apologies. What we also can do, and the timeframe for this is between now and January at the latest, is look at how, you know, we, we can't change how much money we need to spend on our water system, but we can change how it's allocated between the bigger and smaller users. And there is definitely a commitment, I'm hearing, both from the water committee and council in general, to revisit that in short order, so that the, that any changes we can make, any difficult decisions we will make about reallocating costs between businesses and, um, homeowners essentially, uh, will happen in the next several months, so that can be reflected on the, before you get another bill from us.
I guess all I'm saying really is it's easy for homeowners and all these other people who are taking on a minimal end of it, to say, let's wait, let's wait, let's wait. But when you're a business owner and it's cutting out the, a large portion of your profits, um, and, and to, and you know, we're, we just took it on all, all ourself, and I guess I could do things differently, um, and, and, and burden our, our clientele, you know, more heavily, um, and, and continue to push people away. Um, but it's just, it's just easier, you know, when you're less impacted by it, you know? And that's all I'm saying.
No, I, I don't understand.
And, and I think that's the, the feedback we're getting from a lot of business owners here is just, you know, the longer we, a- a- and, and then we talk about potentially more increases, it's like, well, where does it end? You know, like where, what are our, I know we're, we've got these specific limits, but it's like, what, where's the height of these limits, you know, like? That's it, that's all I'm saying.
Agreed, and, and just, so, so there's no question that everybody on the side of the dice feels a sense of urgency about the bill, okay? And as far as the referendum, I mean, the, the process of actually going to sell water, it takes months to do. Anyway, you have to solicit bids and review all this, it all takes place in public. But I think something's gonna be very important as we go through the year, and this is, I have no right to ask anything more of you, but I'm going to, and that is, when we get farther down this path and we're having, continuing that public discussion in advance of a referendum, it's very important that your voices continue to be heard, because we need to remind people. And, and again, I know you have, you know, you, you're here doing this, which is wonderful, and we hear you, but I want to make sure that everybody else hears you as well. And, and because what's going to happen is we're gonna be having a public dialogue as a community between now and whenever that referendum is, I've got November of twenty twenty five, on, on whether or not to accept whatever offer it is that we get. At this point, we don't know how much money we would get or what the term, all these things have to be resolved, but there would be an offer on the table from a, a competent entity, and we're making a decision as a community as, as to whether to sell or not. And, and the, the public education part of that, and the public dialogue around that, is absolutely critical to arriving at the right decision. And so, um, again, I just want to encourage you, and, and anything that we do publicly, obviously, we'll let everybody know well in advance, but I just invite you to come and speak and share what you've shared with us tonight and, at those opportunities, because not everybody in town necessarily comes to these meetings and hears this, and they need to know from you, they need to hear directly from you. I'm happy to go out there and.
I'm telling people every day at my shop.
I'm not being, no, it's important, and, and, and believe, believe me, it's, it's, you know, um, it's the difference between just being a better community and being a community.
Right.
You know.
All right, well, I don't want to take anybody, you know, more of everybody's side, but that's.
I want to, thank you, Clark, Barry, everyone who's, who's spoken here tonight, Otto, and, um, very much appreciated, uh, again, continued commitment that we will administratively do what we can to work with you guys to un, uncover what, um, why usage have changed. Um, and, uh, and then we'll, um, revisit the.
I just have, I, I don't want to draw this out anymore, but, and my fault for not coming to all the subsequent meetings after that.
John, we know who you are, if you could introduce yourself for those watching TV.
Twenty long way, hoping you're using.
Um, uh, can you just explain what, um, is it possible to, to go with American Water right now?
No, no, no.
You have to have an RFP.
Yeah, well, there's, there's two different paths to do it, okay? There's what's called the traditional path, which requires an RFP, and, um, in that one, you, um, put all your specifications, everything in that RFP. And um, in that one, you um, put all your specifications, everything in that RFP. You can't negotiate it, and you put it up out there. Um, and. And it goes to referendum, but that process takes about a year, my understanding typically. The other path that we're using takes about the same length of time. This is the Water and Strategic Protection Act, the WIPA process. The difference fundamentally is only that um, we're able to negotiate the terms directly, but you know, we're gonna have to package everything into the RFP. We basically put on RFP, and then people come and we say, okay, now, we can sit down with you and we can hammer out the terms, which is really important because. There might be, for example, a trade off that you could negotiate between what you're paid for the system. And how fast and how much you get rate relief, because at some point you're gonna end up on the regional tariff. But what a lot of these people do is they hold your current rates for two or three or four years, which is not what we would want. So, one of the reasons that we're taking this path with WIPA is to give us the flexibility to sit down and. Work out the terms that are the best for the community and to be able to to examine those trade offs. I'll let, I mean, Ryan, I'll let you get in from missing anything. But that's why we've chosen this path. However, so the way it works is the traditional re- uh, method always requires a referendum. WIPA doesn't require a referendum unless you get a protest petition signed by, I think it's fifteen percent of, or the. Fifty percent of the people that voted in the last election, and that's what happened. And the protest position basically says. You can go forward with the WIPA process, but you cannot actually execute the sale. Unless it's subject to a public referendum. So we're going, we're doing the same thing we would have been doing before. Um, and probably on about the same timeframe, but it's subject to public referendum. And that's why I'm saying that's the critical part of this is, you know, assuming that we have. A deal in hand that is better, and almost anything would be better. Um. Making sure that everybody in the community fully understands the ramifications of whether we stay or sell. It's critical.
And is it, is there a possibility that uh, the proceeds for the sale can go back to some of the business owners and to to compensate for the?
I'll I'll speak to that a little bit. Um, uh, likely not. The the sale proceeds are scrutinized. There there's a waterfall that they have to go to pay debt first, first water system utility debt, then municipal debt. And if there's things left over, uh, that's scrutinized then by the the state. So it's it's likely that. Um, something like that would not be possible with the proceeds. Um, but ultimately. Uh, something like that might be under the WIPA process. Perhaps something could be negotiated or at least suggested to a suitor, that they could have some, you know, innovative, you know, rate program. Um, you know, there, where um, we do our best with the. Neatest, you know, residential users, the small apartments, the people, you know, um, of that, you know, essentially the affordable housing type user in town. Um, the private companies have funds that help support things like that, and perhaps an economic incentive. Part of it, something that we could try to work out with them to to help businesses. Um, but. That flexibility to even be able to try something like that is why we're so focused on that one method. Um, South Orange. Just this past Tuesday voted to sell their system. Um. Under the traditional process, but their motivation essentially, what they needed back from the company was. Both to transfer it and the the money. The the rates for them was not the core issue. They got a commitment to hold the rates from being increased. We have a very different problem. We need to. Uh, you know, if there's there's a bucket of proceeds that could come from a sale, some of which would be cash to the town, which benefits us, of course, to. You know, to retire debt and and things like that. But the bigger piece of it that we're really seeing is how quickly could a company. Or another entity get our rates down to whatever else in the in the area pays. And that comes at the expense. You know, of 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 cash in the, you know, there's there's two sides to that ledger, and the ability to work out with them. Or to get the most of it, frankly, but I think what council is focused on. Um. Is how much that can come to a rate relief, you know, immediately, how quickly can we get down to what um.
Right, right. Well, and so it sounds like it could, it that that it could actually be the other way, right? So if uh, American Water is nine dollars, nine dollars per thousand. Um. Rather than take uh, uh. A lump sum upfront, it could be two, it could be two dollars per thousand.
Well, that's so, that's that's one of the main reasons why that method is of of a possible sale. Was important to the borough, because it's it's not just do an appraisal, and what's the system worth, and what? What can we give us? Because we can't, we wouldn't be able to turn that, that that money necessarily into something that would help. Your businesses, to be honest with you, we're restricted. In the long term, though, and I'll just, uh, uh, another element of this that we haven't talked about or presented, but we will. There's sort of a third leg to this whole explanation is, is how it relates to the borough's fiscal health. Because that money that comes to the borough, depending on what it is. Um. Would enable us potentially to substantially pay down our debt service. So that's not an immediate benefit to to businesses, but it is a benefit overall in terms of taxes, potentially, or in terms of. Because we have other capital projects and things that we need to do. So there's a trade off between that side of it. And what you might have to give up to get rate relief sooner. And that's why, that's what we need to figure out when we see what the elements are that are on the table and what we need to do is to work out. The optimal solution for the businesses and for the town.
Well, well, I think you heard it tonight, but I'll I'll voice my opinion in that, right? That I I hope you understand that it's not that they're complaining that it's a little high.
Right.
People are on the verge of going out of business. Like, it's bad enough that it's, can, you will lose businesses in this town. So as you start to think about trickle down, ten years from now, you can have lower taxes.
Right.
Keep in mind that you're making decisions that in the next six months, twelve months, you might not have businesses, so.
No.
Weigh that when you're deciding between to pay down.
Absolutely. No, I mean, I'm just presenting the 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 both sides of the scale, but believe me, that's, yeah. So um, so thank you, uh, again to our business owners. Thank you for for. Presenting this to us tonight publicly, or continuing to work with us. We will reciprocate and continue to work with you. On how to to write this ship. We are very appreciative. Um, and as. This or other issues go forward, Clark, Barry, you know, Otto, you know, you know where to find us, and we will continue to extend. Both the the private discussions and the public ones um, uh, in a way that, you know, can can benefit the conversation. So I very much appreciated, um, Clark, you organizing everyone on this, um, and bringing this. And I want to say to our attentions, not like it was a surprise, but you know, to to do this in a way that allowed us to have a. A discussion about it publicly as well. Uh, we're much appreciative. Um, and. Uh, again, for everyone who's here for some other reason, uh, apologies, it's a little longer than we thought, but I wanted to um. Give the business owners an opportunity to to do this here tonight. Um. With that, and with uh, thanks, uh, apologies to our 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 friends at Comcast. Um, our next item on the agenda uh, is a public hearing on a request for a franchise. Um. Re-upment uh, extension, I suppose, from our cable provider. Um, uh, there will be a public. Portion, so this next piece of meeting, we'll have a public hearing on Comcast. Um, and and then after that, we'll get to general public comment. So with that, I'd like to invite Comcast representatives to the podium. Um, and um, yield the floor for uh, your presentation. Thank you.
Just wearing one, because it's part of the public hearing. Would you raise your red hand?
Yeah.
Right, so. Yeah. Um, do you swear that the testimony, that they're about to give, shall be the truth, the whole, whole truth and nothing but the truth?
That's right.
And then if you can, say your, your name.
My name is Gabe Almeda.
How do you spell that?
A L M E D A, and then G A B. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Gabe Almeda, and I am a manager of government affairs. Uh, government regulatory affairs for Comcast Freedom Region, uh, a Comcast operating area that includes New Jersey. Um, I wanted to start first by thanking Mayor Kennedy and Council for holding uh, this hearing on Comcast's municipal application. For renewal of our franchise agreement in Hopewell Borough. Uh, this hearing is required by state statute and regulations and provides an opportunity for members of the public. To present their views on Comcast's application. The franchise is best described as Comcast's license to serve Hopewell residents and operate in the boroughs right away. On May thirty first, two thousand twenty two, Comcast of Mercer County LLC began the renewal process by sending a written notice to the borough. Indicating our intention to seek a renewal of our cable television franchise. I want to stress that our franchise is not exclusive and does not prevent any other service providers from filing an application to serve the borough. On July first, twenty twenty four, Comcast filed its municipal application for renewal of municipal consent with the borough. Along with the map of our network in Hopewell. No action is required at this hearing. Again, this is an opportunity for both the governing body and Comcast to hear from the public. The the community feedback expressed at this hearing can be incorporated into the dialogue for future meetings. Between the borough and Comcast and is reflected in municipal consent ordinance. You will find that Comcast has substantially complied with the material items of the existing franchise and applicable law. We have been responsive to consumer issues and demand, and we possess the financial, legal, and technical ability to continue to operate and manage our network. And we will continue to innovate and roll out new products and services to meet future consumer needs. For anyone unfamiliar with our company, I'd like to take a moment to provide a brief overview of Comcast. Comcast was founded in the U S in nineteen sixty three and is now a global media and technology company with headquarters in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. Comcast Xfinity is now the largest internet provider in the U S, and Comcast Business is the leader in business technology. The network utilized by Xfinity and Comcast Business is the result of years of investment and innovation that continues to get smarter, faster, and more reliable. It delivers a next generation broadband experience to millions of homes and businesses to support the increasing demands of our customers today, as well as in the future. Our network was built to provide flexibility and reliability so that we can quickly respond to spikes or shifts in usage. Comcast engineers have developed a platform that checks four thousand telemetry data linked by more than fifty million modems across the network every twenty minutes. And applies AI and machine learning to seamlessly optimize our internet to the internet delivery. Making our network even faster and more reliable down to the household level. Locally, Comcast operates twenty cable systems in New Jersey and provides cable services to three hundred and forty two municipalities. More than two point five million New Jersey homes and businesses have access to Xfinity and Comcast Business products and services. Comcast is proud to serve Hopewell Borough. And offer residents and businesses our world-class video entertainment, broadband, and mobile services throughout our Xfinity and Comcast business brands. Comcast is a global media and technology company that offers a scale of stability, innovation, and security that few, if any, providers can manage. Our focus and commitment to the local communities we serve is a direct result of the substantial resources that Comcast is able to mobilize on behalf of our consumers. We look forward to extending our relationship with Hopewell residents and businesses, and we will continue to invest our world-class products and services. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, I guess I will. First, before we start the public part of the hearing, invite any of our council members or. We have an unusual number of professionals here this evening. I don't know if our planner or engineer have any questions for you, but I'll extend. Uh, perhaps if anyone, uh, first on the side has any questions or or comments for uh, for Comcast. Seeing none, um, I'd like to open the meeting to the public. For the public hearing on Comcast's requests to renew their non-exclusive franchise. So if we had another cable company, they'd be free to come in, I suppose, and 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 make the same pitch. Um, uh, everything from, uh, you know. Uh, NBC Sports, uh, perhaps not, uh.
Eagles, Fox.
I I I don't know what, I can't, I can't really make up any kind of question to be asked or anything, but with that, um, if anyone has a um, question or comment here in person. Now would be the time to come up to the uh, the front of the room. And while everyone races up to the front, I will announce for the Zoom users, we've got fifteen people um. Dialing in, watching via Zoom, and I'm sure ecstatic to uh, to ask questions about the Comcast cable franchise. Um, so if anyone would like to uh, make a comment or question online, please push the raise hand button. Or star nine if you are our phone person. We do have a phone dialing uh, this evening. Seeing none, um, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing on the Comcast uh, application request.
Um.
Do I have a second? All in favor? All right, closed. Right. Thank you so much. Um, I I believe this starts a process of a bit of a dialogue on our ordinance that we've worked. Um, the the people on around that table, our attorneys and administrators, clerk, will collaborate with you guys, so our, um, much appreciate you coming out here tonight. And I think what you do for our community, um, and providing uh, internet in particular, so thank you.
Well, uh, I would like to leave my business cards with council, um, and I'm just point in contact if you guys need anything in terms of service or anything like that. I gave Regina our um, emergency contact line for any sort of emergency issues, down wire, things like that, so you guys have direct access to us. Um, and me as well, so if you guys need, I'm here at your service. Thank you so much. Thank you, guys.
Okay. Um, our next item uh, on on our agenda is that the first uh, open uh, public comment uh, section. Um, mayor, councilor will take comments, uh, first from members of the public. Uh, then uh, from those on Zoom, uh, we'll uh, try to limit the first comment section to five minutes. A reminder that there's no immediate action that can be taken. We will attempt to catalog and and respond if we can. Uh, to questions or comments. I'll also ask uh, that if your comment is on something that will have a public hearing, as say, perhaps an ordinance. So if you wanted to make a comment about our salary ordinance, for example, if you could wait until that public comment section. Uh, the same thing would go with if it's a Hopewell fifty seven comment or question about the ordinance to be done later. Um, I'll ask that that be done during the public hearing on that ordinance. Um, and then. Um. The last piece would be, uh, I, I mean, I'll try to be consistent with what I've, what I've been saying here, one second. Uh, so on the Hopewell fifty uh, seven redevelopment, I've recused myself from the project due to conflict arising from. One of my work colleagues being involved with the application as one of the redevelopment's professionals. Uh, so while I. Not been personally involved on either side and don't have any interest in the project or the applicant, uh, the involvement of someone who also works for the same company that I do. Is too close of a connection, and for me to participate, so I will continue to uh, recuse myself of that. So if I, uh, as we get through the discussion part of things here, I'd like to first. Ask for things unrelated to Hopewell fifty seven, uh, first, and then we'll uh, open the floor for that, so I can hand the gavel over uh, to Council President Weaver. So uh, if we could um, start the public comment, uh, Mr. Brody, you're uh, you're free to 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 begin. Uh, if you could uh, um. Remind the the community of your your name and that you're a resident, that would be uh.
I'll do that. Hopewell Borough residents, they're twenty seven years. So I'm here for a new topic uh, today. Um, and it's something that's near geared my heart. To go back to my planning board pages, Peter McCall, New Vacky, and Brad Line. Uh, when I was in the master plan redevelopment committee, uh, we talked about sidewalks. And I want to give a shout out to Christopher for your work in in public safety and sidewalks. And also what I'm about to say is, um, I'm also a big believer in participatory democracy. So it's not just about you guys volunteering your time, it's these citizens working with you. And learning from Harry Chicken back in the day. Anyway, um, so here's my uh, uh, here's my subject. And I've I've spoken with Cherry about it uh, informally, and it's about sidewalks. And when we do in the master plan, it's great. Again, lines up papers, fantastic words, excellent. But we have real sidewalk problems, and I think that that horrible little earthquake back in April did some, I've been noticing. Sidewalks are a little higher, there are a little more problems. There are four inch, I have a four inch curb sidewalk situation, nice tripping devices. Um, in the town, and you know, when you have a young kid, and twenty four years ago, and that happened for me, but you know, with the stroller, what do you do with that? Uh, it's better than even than that, elderly people tripping, uh, I think we even had a former mayor who tripped on a sidewalk. Uh, but um, uh, and then the other problem is. Um. Uh, well, how do you fix them? And um, and this kind gets to 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 be a a situation like with my, my son. How do you explain to my son? First, I have a corner property, so I I have two hundred fifteen feet of sidewalk. That's my fault. And how, yeah, why didn't you buy a corner property? What are you, what are you, crazy man? I'm like, look, it's a nice house, you know? Okay, so how do you explain to him when across the street from me, my good neighbor, doesn't have a sidewalk? So we're shoveling two hundred fifteen feet of sidewalk, and over there, nothing. So I look at him, and I'm like. Hmm, I said, you know what? Why don't you come to council sometime, and we'll come up with the Sidewalk Fairness Act, the SFA. And what this does is a couple of things. One is if someone doesn't have a sidewalk across the street from you, they need to participate in the sidewalk shovel, because they don't have sidewalk. So their people are on my side of the street, and and there has to be something that talks about this, or they put a sidewalk in. When we first moved here in nineteen ninety-seven, we, our sidewalk was so busted up, we spent three thousand dollars to fix it because we wanted to be good citizens. It's the English common law, you just want to be a citizen. Um, or when, some boroughs, when you have, uh, construction projects, like they had additions done, whatever, the town says, oh, wait a minute, you can afford a fifty thousand, a hundred thousand dollar addition, you can afford to put a sidewalk in. We're too nice here, we didn't do that. Okay, so that's, that's another issue. Um, uh, the second part is I want to come up with a proposal to fix the sidewalks we have. And what I'm thinking of is, you know, the Gans property, you have one of the best Victorian houses in Hopewell on Blackwell and Lafayette, he's got brick sidewalks. And you know what's neat about brick? When the trees change and the roots change, you can fix the sidewalk easily because they're little pieces. You and I gotta go out there, just have fun, put some music on, and fix the little, and open it to a nice little curb. But when you have a concrete tape, what is, David, what is a concrete, three-foot-by-three-foot piece of concrete, four inches thick, weigh?
Eight hundred pounds.
Yeah, eight hundred pounds, right. So you're like looking at, now, I know there's some shavers, I've seen some people at the high school or the elementary school, and maybe we can talk about how that can be done. But I was thinking, if the borough could actually come by and take, get rid of, like, I'll be the guinea pig for the first one. Take my four-foot-by-four-foot, three-foot-by-three-foot sidewalk out, and I have extra brick. And I'll do the, I'll do it myself. I'll do the brick part of it and fix it. So I'll have this little quilt of like concrete, 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 then brick fixed, and then we smooth it over, it's curved. And we solved the safety issue, it looks nice, it matches the great work that Borough did years ago. Thank you to to you guys for that, for all the sidewalk and the shell was involved with that. And I'm just thinking that could be a proposal. And this way, it's both, it's both council, and it's both, or, you know, it's both our town's money and the homeowner, uh, participation, because we don't have a lot of money here. So, um, that's, that's a proposal. And and I'm thinking, you know, people are, you know, especially with the developments about to happen, the fifty-seven, with the extra money and the and the taxes we need to get in, we should be able to fund this and complete the master plan, the vision of it. You know, and one last thing, years ago, I'd be walking to to get my car changed, the the original South Village, well, one of the stations where you had. And you're walking, you're walking, you buy the elevator, everything's good, and you get to the, you know what I'm talking about, you get to the last four feet, and you gotta walk in the street and get hit by the car, and then go into his place, and I'm like, wouldn't you be crazy? So I think, Chris, I heard that maybe you're you're doing something with connections.
Yeah, so I I was definitely looking into fixing some of our more damaged sidewalks. Unfortunately, it turns out it is much harder to find grant money to repair a sidewalk than it is to add a new sidewalk. So the one point five one million dollars we have for the St. Francis School brand, there will be some added sidewalks where they are missing. However, they did not want to replace in kind. So we were asking to replace a sidewalk, it would have to be better material, wider, there were things that, you know, it was it was just making it so complicated. So it is something I have looked into, I haven't found anything yet. If you ever find a source of funding to replace damaged sidewalks, please let us know. Um, because because of our ordinance and how it's written, it's just been a very difficult thing to find funding for, unfortunately. But I I am, I would love that so much. So please, if you find anything, let us know.
Thank you. Give me a call.
A couple of quick comments, if I can, just because, Lee, that's something I thought about a lot. When we first moved here thirty-four years ago, um, we have sidewalk, there were sections that were, you know, like this, we've got a skateboard park, and I didn't actually know that we were responsible for fixing. I mean, we we did, because somebody told us, but, um, because it's actually in the right of way. It's 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 an interesting thing. The sidewalks in this town are generally within the public right of way.
That's right.
They're not on your property.
Correct.
But the property owner's responsible for not only clearing the maintenance, and then, as you say, some people don't have them, some people do, some people have corners, lucky you. Um, and and I I I always, years ago, I argued that we should probably, um, take that on as a borough, just the way we do with any other capital project, and get the cost evenly, and everybody looked at me like I had two heads. Just apparently, just in the way it's done.
Yeah.
Um, we actually did, uh, replace our entire fifty feet with brick years ago.
Oh.
A mason come in to do it, and it's starting to buckle now over the roofs of our oak tree, and I have to go out and reset some. But the the principle you're talking about is a good one. Um, I remember, and I, and I, you know, I did it with with permission, I think Dennis O'Neill was our engineer there, it was kosher, but I know one issue that came up was, there was definitely no appetite for having more than one material on a different sidewalk. Like, you didn't want to have, like, patchwork, some different stuff. But I think that the the principle you're pointing to of having something that gives around these tree roots is a good thing. The other thing is also to maybe be able to go, you know, radially.
So I'm glad you brought that up. So we actually did that with the new father. I said, oh, okay, I learned from these trees, they come with roots.
Right.
And so we actually curved around, and it's like, it's like, you know, Wizard of Oz, it's kind of sweet. And we did that. And then guess what happened? I remember Joe Hill, our our late brick mayor, who we had, I think, a long time ago, but he said, oh, I'm so sorry, all those ashes died, and they got diseased. And and what happened, uh, was when the new trees come in, they can't put them in the same place because the roots are in the way. So I got these two curves, and the tree is right with this on the sidewalk, curved to nowhere.
Paul, thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Just one quick thing. I just want to say, I don't know if you were spotting on us, but I sat with Doug at this table this morning, the Shade Tree Committee, talking about this exact situation. So it's on our radar, it's on our mind, it's way more of a complicated solution than than you think until you start talking about it. So I just want you to know that you're you're spotted, and I'm going to recruit you back to some position at some point. Shade Tree's looking for someone else, but but we're we're talking about.
I have kind of like a personal request. Unfortunately, last week, my name is Gloria Anton. I live at forty-three, forty-five Lafayette Street, directly across from fifty-seven project, um, and the street. However, last week, unfortunately, we had an issue where the strip mall's sewer system, because of the grease, was backing up into my house. Thank God my husband went downstairs. We are probably only, well, there's my house and the other house, forty-seven and forty-nine, that get affected. And this is the second time since I lived there. Um, so we have a half bath in our one side of our basement, and my husband saw the toilets backing up. So we called Lanning, who comes to our houses every other day, and, uh, he came right away at four thirty and said, look, it's not your problem. It's the strip mall sewer system, because he looked in all the white pipes. Unfortunately, at that time of the day, my poor husband, who's disabled and and not in good health, had to keep bailing the toilet out till like the wee hours because it would flood into my room's basement. We don't have a contact number. Okay, and I know the town doesn't have the equipment to do the job that they did. And so what happened was I called the non-emergency police number, they couldn't help me, they called the Board of Health. I did get a phone call, um, I don't know if it was this next morning or whatever, um, that, uh, somebody was gonna have a meeting with the Board of Health and pass an ordinance that the strip mall must um, get inspected, make sure this doesn't happen again. The other thing is the company that comes out to help our our water and sewer men uh, said that they should periodically, at least once or month or two months, look into these sewer paths because the water was starting to back up Lafayette Street, or it was hot all the way down the street. And also, there's water, the house forty-seven, forty-nines, there's always water in the pipe when you walk through the the front lawn. And and lately, on occasion, I've been neighbors that walked their dog across the street, they can say, oh, I smell the sewer, I smell the sewer. So my request, please, can we have somebody to call at, to come out the that same night, not the next morning, because it's too late. I mean, I've already had sewer into my one-side basement when I owned only the one side, and had to rip the whole thing out because of the sewer smell, I wasn't home when it happened. So we do need, I I mean, I I have a number, the direct number for Steve at the strip mall, he's very cooperative with me, he helped me with vultures at one time, but, um, we need to be able to, after hours or on weekends, have that number of that company that comes out that helps us. We really could appreciate that, because otherwise, I can't call the fire department, they can't help us.
Right.
So this is the only answer that we would have, is to have a contact that we can, you know, whether I go through Steve, if it's their fault, because the sewer, why they didn't run the sewer line to Broad Street, and they ran it along my prop, the side of the property, I don't know. And then my concern is, because this happens, and we're going to build a hundred and thirty apartments across the street, that's
Isn't that immoral?
Hello? I just need somebody at least to be able to, okay, it's five o'clock on Wednesday night, let me call this company that came the next day to come do something or whatever, and to have the water company look in there more often.
So a couple of, to to many of your points, first, I'm so sorry that this happened to you.
Still a must.
Time, yeah.
Sounds awful.
We we are accelerating, getting some more teeth in our ordinance, as you as you kind of mentioned, to make sure that those types of inspections happen more regularly, um, and that there be some, uh, I'll just say teeth to them, um, if if they don't. Um, uh, the point you made about the of the afterhouse calls actually is a very good one. I don't know if that's something that was, we were kind of thinking about, and perhaps we should, you know, dialogue with, uh, with the non-emergency folks, so they know.
Unfortunately, having a test, these two houses.
Yes. Your contact there.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll, we'll, there's a, there's a, there's a gap there that, uh, and we have a great relationship, and then later tonight, I'm gonna thank Chief Rosso for a couple of things, um, that they've done for us, but ultimately, we'll we'll make sure that gap is so that they know um, who to who to connect you with, uh, because they
Yeah.
it's a mission that, you know, they should have, and we can connect.
Fortunately, nothing happened, you know what I'm saying? We were fortunate that we didn't get any overflow and there wasn't any damage. We were all on top of it. But the first time that it had happened, I wasn't home. You know, and, um, if my husband, in fact, if my husband didn't see the toilet coming up, he he, who knows, you know? We didn't go downstairs, it may have gotten worse. So we're, you know, preventative measures here, you know? So we get somebody we can at least call, instead of me calling all night, police department and everybody else, and they never got back to us anyway, so.
Thank you. Well, and and we'll we'll close out a little bit, but likely, not not announcing what the solution is, but likely, we'll make sure that the
Well, a phone number.
Well, yeah, um, uh, but I think we want to make sure that the police and, you know, people that, places that people would think to call, you know, we'll put this on our website or something like that, but, you know, you're not going to find it there. You're gonna, you're gonna call, uh, seven three seven thirty-one hundred.
Well, I quote, non, non-emergency police department in Hopewell Township, and they were very nice, and, you know, they have pulled
Which should they know the answer?
They pulled into the health department, but then unfortunately, nobody ever gets back to you, it's, you know.
Till till they reopen the next day, and it's too late.
So that's the problem.
So we'll, 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 we'll close that.
Because, of course, you know it'll happen on a Sunday or a Blue Holiday Day, it's always gonna happen when you can't get a hold of somebody.
Right.
So.
So we'll, we'll, we'll make sure that the the right people are, um, uh, lined up and and then ultimately that the non-emergency folks get a better list, perhaps, of us, of who they should share.
Somebody that we can get a hold.
Now, that's excellent comment.
Okay, thank you.
Can I have your address?
Yes, it's forty-three, forty-five Lafayette Street.
Thank you. Um, and also in person, uh, for non-Hopewell fifty-seven related topics, if not, um, I'll I'll extend that to those, uh, online as well, to push your raise hand button. Seeing none, I'll reopen, um, here for someone would like to speak on Hopewell fifty-seven, and get on a topic that's not to be covered by the public hearing. That will be the time, and I'll hand things over to, um, Council President, uh, Weaver. Same, uh, all right, I've got a a a hand raised online, uh, so I will shift, uh, to that and and promote, um, Morrison. Cookman. Uh, Ms. Cookman, you should be able to turn your camera on and unmute yourself.
I'll unmute myself. You all know what I look like. Um, um, you said to speak about fifty-seven now?
What, what, is this a general comment, or will this be about Hopewell fifty-seven?
It's about fifty-seven, and that's what I'm asking you, I don't, I have trouble hearing this. So you're saying I should wait for my question? That's okay.
Uh, not necessarily. I'm just saying that if that's gonna be the topic, I'm gonna step out. So if that's, if that's what it is, I'm okay.
You betcha, Ryan. Yes, that's my topic.
With that, as I announced earlier, I will, uh, continue my, uh, refusal on this topic and steps.
You can go ahead, Melissa, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Um, I'm sorry I'm not there for this, but I I just, you know, I have serious concerns about the size of, um, Hopewell fifty-seven. Uh, one of the things I recently thought of was, I remember the furor about people worrying about the traffic that would happen when the dispensary was going to be there, which would have been nothing. Um, that's an aside, but, um, this is sort of, I don't know whether, uh, you you will do this, but I'd like to ask each of you individually to tell me why you think a hundred and thirty, why this is a good thing. I understand as a board, you came to consensus and did that, that's the way it's supposed to work. I understand that. But I just need to know, like, because I don't understand how many people are comfortable with, uh, putting, uh, commu, uh, adding another town to our town. Um, a- and, um, so I would really like to ask that question of each of you, if that's okay, Krista. Can I do that?
Melissa, is that all right with the rest of you? Yeah, okay.
Um, so Deb, can I, so is that okay?
We are really not supposed to be speaking to the specifics of, for example, the next site plan part of it. I mean, I'm just a little guy.
I'm not talking about the site. I'm talking about the fact that it exists. David, sorry. Um,
I mean, I can take a stab at it if that's all right with you, and then we can, you know, move along. Obviously, there's, there's a lot of specifics that we cannot discuss at this point, simply because we're not at the site plan phase.
I'm I'm not, that's not what I'm ask, I'm sorry, Krista, that's not what I'm asking then.
I know.
What I'm asking is, like, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I think that we could use more residents in the town. Um, we just heard from our local businesses about how they're struggling. I think this is a great way to help them and build a better business community here and have more support for the businesses. And as far as the concerns that come along with things like traffic safety, obviously, that is an extremely important issue to me. But I also believe that traffic calming works, and I think that that will be a good way to mitigate some of the extra traffic here, or all of the extra traffic that this will generate.
Um, thank you.
Because it's your size and traffic. So, I'm sorry.
Um, I, I, okay, so, um, then my question is to each of you. Tell me why two hundred cars on that area, and you're gonna add parking on the street, for some of it, they're not even required to offer parking to all of their residents. I I want, I want you to explain to me how people are going to cross the street and how people are going to do it during rush hour. Do you really believe that's okay? Do you honestly believe that adding this many, I understand it needs to be redeveloped, and I understand we need affordable housing, but I resent the fact that our town is, a whole other town is being added. And so I really want to understand why each of you are so strongly behind this particular redevelopment.
Um, I, our experts say that the town infrastructure can handle it, and I trust our experts. We used to have a larger population than we currently have.
You have traffic on your own street that your children couldn't cross your street. Can you imagine what it's gonna be like for the kids down here? All right, well, that's not, but I wanted to ask other people too. I wanted to ask, like, Deb, why she's so insuppo, like, what is it about this besides the money? I just don't understand how you can justify it. I don't, and I'm not alone in this. And and I've said it before, it's just, you're adding, you're adding two hundred cars, and they're saying there's no rush hour? Have they been here during rush hour? You you will have to have a a light at Hamilton here. You will, there's no way the traffic can handle it.
Here will have to be probably some sort of traffic calming measure there, such as a stop sign, or a surround felt, there will have to be something there, of course.
Right, right at the crossroads where the people get hit by the cars all the time. I just don't understand how anybody can support this many units, and I, and I, and it makes me lose faith.
Well, Melissa, I guess for me, I, you know, part of it is that this is private property, and you know, the the plan that the developer is putting forth, you know, is is what it is. Um, I do have faith in the planning board that all of the studies that you're concerned about are going to be done. So the traffic study, you know, the stormwater management, um, all the concerns everybody has, we're we are listening to them. But I I feel very strongly that the town is going to be better off without that awful contaminated flooding, toxic building there, and
I guess you don't have young children living around there. Okay, thank you, I appreciate your honesty and your.
I'll let me finish now, Melissa, but it's fine, that's okay, we'll talk. I mean, I, I, as Krista said, you know, there's gonna be traffic calming measures. We're trying to make the front of it very low, so the impact visually on Lafayette is not, you know, overwhelming. It's gonna be the, the lower stories.
And Somerset.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah, anyway, I, I, I think it's gonna help the businesses in town and I, I just, I feel, I feel good about it and I feel good about the process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wanna answer?
Uh, Melissa, I'm happy to answer, I, um, and, and I wanna add that I have an eight year old that I think is single handedly keeping the candy store at Twine in business because he walks over.
My daughter says thank you, she appreciates the business, I'm sure.
I, uh, that's why I never have cash, because he walks over to Twine. But I, I'm saying that specifically because he, he's an example of a, a little kid doesn't live there. But I live on Columbia, so I know what street with cars that drives down feels like. He has to cross Columbia, has to cross Broad Street. And, um, so I, I definitely have that in mind. And the reason I feel okay with the size of the development, which was, and still is, uh, something that feels big to me, is that I and, and the rest of council and our professionals have spent hours and hours and hours and hours revisiting this topic. We've paused the process, we've gone back and looked at ordinances, I've called Joanna, I don't know how many times, Doug, I mean, I, and I, but the reason I feel okay is because I now thoroughly understand what's coming. And our engineers here to, to reiterate this, the, the process itself has guardrails and safeguards and, and, and tells us what the eventual site plan and impact will look like on the town. And I, I believe that we, everything, we've gone back. We just spent, at, at David, we just went back and looked at, uh, contracts and FAQs to build in everything that we've heard here at our meetings, the emails we've gotten online, the petitions and all the things that we've got. We have built everything in to the next part of this that we can think of, everything. And so everyone's questions and concerns are baked in, in a way that I feel confident will be addressed in a, in a safe and, and beneficial way. So that's why I feel okay.
I just wanna remind you that when there's an event at the elementary school, you won't be able to get to your house. You know, fifty more cars, I'm sorry, that wasn't polite, I apologize.
I don't wanna be too redundant because a lot of what, um, has been said are the same reasons that I feel in favor of this. And you believe we need more residences in town. Um, I do believe we need more density in town to support our businesses. Um, we have a lower population now than we did decades ago. This will allow us, in my opinion, to be able to have the thriving downtown that we used to have, that we say that we still want today. When I first ran for council a week years ago, I talked about, um, the lack of affordability in Hopeful Borough and I still think that we have a lack of affordability. And I'm not just talking about the twenty six affordable units, I'm also just talking about merchant units, um, that would be available. And I think that that would help us a lot with that as well, to be a more inclusive community and a lot more people to live here and get to appreciate and enjoy all of the things that we get to enjoy and appreciate living here. Um, inclusion is incredibly important to me, uh, just as a human, as a person. I have a son in college, I like to think I live in a town when he graduates that he could move back to and there would be somewhere that he could afford to live, um, you know, within the town without having to come up with um, an exorbitant down payment to, to live here in the very limited rental units that we have available. We do the housing crisis in the country, not enough housing in New Jersey. Um, and I feel really comfortable with the process and the safeguards that Sheri spoke about in place. As the process moves on, if we find that there are issues with stormwater, with traffic, with schools, this, it, it stops. You know, like, if, if it can't be done responsibly, it doesn't happen. And I feel really, really confident in our professionals and in our boards that we will do this responsibly. And when it comes to permission, that it would be done the right way and it will be a great thing for our town and all of us the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
A couple of comments, um, one, I'll just touch briefly on population, which is kind of interesting. I didn't know this until recently, but it turns out our peak population was in nineteen seventy, if you look at the census data. And I stumbled across this and I thought it was a mistake and then I looked all over the person, you have the data junkie. And, and we've actually, our population's declined by over fifteen percent between nineteen seventy and, and twenty twenty, according to the decennial census. And that's partly because of the baby boom, right, of which I'm a part of. Um, there were also a lot less houses here, but there were, there were three hundred and fifty four more people in this town recorded in the census, believe it, in, in the census, believe it or not, nineteen seventy than there were in, in twenty twenty. So if it's over twenty two hundred people, then our population is nineteen hundred and something. So I think, I think just in a very general sense, we have the ability to, to absorb more people. But I also have a lot of confidence, as, as Sheri said, in the, in the processes, in both the site plan application process and also in a lot of the safeguards that we built into the redevelopment agreement, which you haven't seen yet, but you will. We're gonna be voting on a resolution, so I authorize the execution of that. But that's a really much, a fifty five page document, but it has a lot of requirements in there. Like things that aren't normally captured in the ordinances, that you want to make requirements in terms of analysis or things that people have to do. Um, and, and we put a lot of effort into, into making that. So I think those things provide a lot of safeguard that, you know, you ask the question, well, like, how can you possibly, after this work with cars? The answers have to be hammered out to site plan application process, that's really where it happens. And, and as Sheri said, you know, as Samara said, if you can't, if you can't come up with a solution, uh, for these things at the sort of densities we're talking about, then there'll be something else. So that's the process really where, where in stormwater, uh, flooding risks, traffic impacts, impacts on the schools. There will also actually the fiscal analysis, which happens in another part of this process. So all these things and also, um, uh, additional, uh, load on our emergency services. There, there are ways to, to analyze all these and, and essentially put the burden on the developer to explain, you know, what those consequences will be and, and we have to figure out what, in our professionals, what the best answers are. Um, but I also wanna talk a little bit about affordable housing, um, in, in two ways. One, obviously the need for it and, and I know you're on board with it, you know, conceptually. But I also think it's important to remind everybody, and not everybody knows this, of our kind of trajectory in terms of land use decisions in the borough. So, I mean, I go back thirty four years, Barry and I moved here. And before I was on council, which was a long time ago, um, we were working to preserve the Rula track, that was sixty six acres, okay? So that's now open space and it's connected to the park. There was also the Rosieri track, Joe Rosieri's park in the borough, which is about forty acres, which is now in farmland preservation. That was preserved about the same time, through no, through no effort of mine, I'm just saying that was, the borough leadership was on board with that. Um, those were all places where with water and sewer service, there would have been a lot of houses. Uh, and by the way, in addition to a lot of houses and a lot of people, a lot of runoff, a lot of, non-point sort of. It's all avoided. And then you have the St. Michael's track, which isn't in the borough. But in fact, the borough was pivotal, pivotal in preserving that because of our role on the sewer board. I mean, the, the diocese, I think, had the presumption that they were just gonna develop every square inch of that, you know, at some point because they had actually contributed the land for the sewer plant. But that's not the way it went and through, you know, with obviously D and R Greenway and all the other, this was done. But, and those were all, I think, good decisions to create a green belt around this town. Um, but the consequence of that is that those were all opportunities to create affordable housing that we no longer have. And now, the only way that we can really do it is through infilling at a substantially higher density. So this is, to me, there's almost an implicit obligation, or not almost, an implicit obligation to do that. Because we don't have big greenfields where we can do that through inclusionary housing. And then you combine with that, that this is the largest single developable parcel really in town. Well, not the largest, but the largest one that's, that's really viable at this density and it's a round field site. And, and the, you know, the complications of if, if, if not this, then what? As far as what happens to that, I mean, I don't think anybody wants to have that building sitting there crumbling away forever. Um, and, and we've certainly looked at every option that we can find. And I mean, we've looked at property owners have on the market for years. And, um, the only three people that were ever seriously interested in, were all proposing the same thing at the same density. So it's looking like that's probably the only outcome overall that's likely for that. That combined with the need for affordable housing, combined with our decline in population, to me, um, and, and my confidence in the site plan application process and in the other kinds of safeguards that we've built in, um, gives me some confidence that we can work out something that will ultimately be beneficial. I mean, it's not a simple thing to do, but I think, you have a process in place, so.
Um, thank you, thank you, I hope I'm wrong. I mean, I really hope I'm wrong. Um, and I just, I think part of it, and I, I, I'm speaking for people that I haven't spoken to, but, um, and as transparent as it is, because we have to go through the site plan process and there'll be reports and things, I just, um, I hope we have easy access to it as the community, to be able to see those reports, like what they're really saying about the traffic and not just have it go, okay, well, they said this, we'll do this. Um, but I will, I will, um, continue to suffer through this. And, um, but I appreciate your taking the time to, um, to give me some answers. And it's clear you all feel, um, pretty strongly about it. So I will, hope I'm wrong and, um, will continue to listen and read whatever I can, so thank you.
Thanks, Melissa.
Alright, so yeah, done. Oh, no.
It's okay.
Go ahead, yeah, if you don't mind saying your name, please.
Uh, Andrew Osborne, I know I'm Lafayette, um, I just had a couple non agenda fifty seven points, um. Uh, first, in response to the town's population change over time, I don't, I mean, I think it's important to look at that not as just an isolated, uh, factor, there have been other changes in the town. For example, it used to be train service that would extend to New York, which we no longer have. Uh, I grew up in Pennington and I know even in my lifetime, they still had that service. And one of my neighbors commuted to New York and that's something we don't have now. And to your point, now that we're kind of surrounded by this green belt, you know, that has positive aspects, but it does have the negative consequence that we're forced to infill to increase our density. Uh, however, you know, as I mentioned, there's no longer that train service, there's no longer, uh, larger industrial base in Ewing, Trenton area. So the, uh, the, uh, job, uh, availability around Hopeful has changed over time too. So, you know, the, the town might not really be able to sustain a much bigger population. And with a hundred market rate units, um, these could be renting, a two bedroom might be listed at twenty five, twenty seven, maybe three thousand dollars a month. Which, depending on when someone moved here, that could be higher than their tax and mortgage payments each month. And for a little two bedroom apartment, no yard. So I, I don't know if it's really sustainable, um, without some other changes to go with it. Um, the, I would definitely love to see our businesses get the support they need to grow and the ones we highlight, you know, the, the mix we have, great to see a little bit more. Uh, but you pretty much have to drive ten, fifteen minutes to get anywhere in Hopeful, which I, you know, I moved here knowing that, I'm comfortable with it. But when you have alternatives like Montgomery with their new housing, Pennington, you gotta be a lot of new housing and Hopeful Township, which is much more accessible to places where people go now by car. I, I don't know that Hopeful's really gonna pull that much in and that may have some effect on, you know, tax revenue if you can't fill the building. But anyway, I did have one other point, um, just related to sewer. Um, from my research, our wastewater treatment plant is at about ninety one percent capacity right now. Um, I saw on there was a frequently asked question, it's close to the website, um, that wastewater treatment plant that requires to expand and accommodate affordable housing. But if this project puts the plant at say ninety five percent capacity or ninety nine percent capacity and the affordable housing demand for the sewer is met at that time, um, assume they don't have to expand unless the, it's gonna go over a hundred percent. Meaning if another project comes in, then they'll have to expand. But if it gets to ninety nine percent and the plant can handle it, they don't need to expand. Um, you know, one consequence to that is I know the council is, um, and the planning board are really looking into, uh, ADUs, accessory dwelling units. Um, and if each of those units is gonna add, I guess it would be, uh, maybe fifty gallons per bedroom, I don't know what the calculation would be, but if we're at say ninety eight, ninety nine percent after this project, maybe only ten people can put an ADU in. If they're not affordable, who pays for the expansion of the sewer treatment plant at that point? That's just something we should have on the radar, uh, like, I'm in favor of allowing people to have ADUs. Um, and it should be an equitable, uh, option for people. And other than that, if the first ten people rush in and get it and then, oh, sorry, we're maxed out, the rest of you are out of luck. So, uh, I hope that's something that we're considering as well.
You know, just a couple of quick comments on sewer, so, um, and Joan, I might have comments too, but then, so a couple of things going on. So, so that statutory requirement that we referenced, the FAQs is something that, you know, we were advised of, you know, sort of worst case. But the, the Stone Brook Sewers Authority in general, my understanding is, I mean, their businesses supply, you know, our needs. And, um, right now, there are a couple of things happening. So one of the things that determines our capacity at the moment is infiltration and inflow, right? That's one of its getting into people's sanitary lines or into our sewer collection system. For example, when it rains, say you're just treating clean water that's coming into the system. And it's an ongoing problem with every sewer system. It's also an ongoing problem with two developments in the township that are connected to that system. Um, and one of them, I think, is Princeton Farms, uh, I believe the, um, director of Sewer, Sewer Authority told us they've got a township grant, eight hundred thousand dollar grant to deal with I and I at Princeton Farms. They're hoping as a result of that to actually liberate about another fifty five thousand gallons a day, which is a lot. I mean, that's, that's a three hundred thousand gallon a day plant, that's the rate of capacity. So if that comes in, we should have some more headroom, so that's a good thing. The other thing is, is generally speaking, one of the great things about Stone Brook Sewers Authority is that, um, if there's a capital, uh, project on that plant, uh, the capital cost is shared by all of the participating municipalities. Uh, and our share of that debt service is based on our flow. So it's actually a pretty good deal. Um, and it's just unlike a lot of other things, but that's the economy of scale that you have, for example, if you don't have the water department. So anyway, just throwing that out, but yeah, I mean, you're considering, it's important, we have to be looking to the future and other needs in terms of, for example, ADUs and other opportunities that come along, so.
Good evening, Susan Bristol from the Larchette Institute, good to see you. Um, I just wanted to know if you would receive, um, a memo that I sent and asked for distribution this week?
Yeah.
Yes. Great, great, thank you. I was asked to embellish a little bit on some of my comments made at your previous public meeting about fifty seven Hamilton. What I'm unclear about right now is whether you want feedback or comments specific to the ordinance now or later?
There will be a public hearing for the ordinance later, which would be the appropriate time for that.
Okay.
This is anything that's not related to the specific ordinance.
Right.
Okay, all right, so, um, before, I'll, I'll wait for that, but do any of you have any questions about any of the content in the memo? No, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone in person for public comment on fifty seven Hamilton issues that are not included in the ordinance? Is there anyone on line two? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry, um, I'm not clear if, if, if I'm misspeaking because it is in the ordinance.
I mean, it's, you're not gonna be like conundrated, we're just trying to keep it sort of.
No, totally understood, I'm David Walman, East Prospect, um. I keep hearing the two hundred. I keep hearing the two-hundred-car thing. And I'm wondering what the basis, and this might be at a not the right time to do it, what the basis. Of the coefficient or the number is to get that, you take like a hundred and thirty units, you multiply. Are we assuming there's less than two cars for every household that presumably has two adults and maybe even a driving child? What what I'm saying is, and trying not to be cynical, is I think two-hundred is not realistic, I think it could be three-hundred. And I'm just wondering, where do the where do the numbers come from that the or the assumption that arrives at. The number of cars that we actually think will be there, because that becomes the predicate upon which the traffic study is done. And I'm saying as a lay semi-ignorant, you know, resident, that number sounds low.
I think again, that'll be addressed in the site plan, because then we'll have more information specifically about like the actual amount of units that will be included, Joanna, do you wanna?
Sure, so the ordinance. Right now calls for, it's one and a half cars per. Unit. So that's why everybody's saying around two-hundred. So and Bob's probably better to speak of it than I am, but in general, that's a ratio that's assigned to. The mix of units that are in this development, so it's one-bedroom, two-bedroom. Units that generally don't always, maybe one person living there, maybe a couple living there that has two, but on average. For that unit, that for the whole development, then it it works out to about one and a half, and that's a study that. Has recently come out from Rutgers, they've done a very comprehensive parking study throughout New Jersey.
That's great.
And have determined that 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 these multifamily residential units are do not generate the the typical amount of of cars of say a single-family. Development.
Okay, that's.
And I don't know, Bob might, probably has much more information than I do.
Yeah, so that one and a half, that's the actual parking that they have to provide per unit, I think the study was a lower figure than that. So it just, it's the one and a half is the number of parking spaces. Per unit that the developer has to provide.
Oh, so it's actually. More generous than. Yes, okay, got it. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else in person? Anyone on Zoom? If there's anyone who have any other thing.
Ryan, he says, anyone on Zoom?
Oh, I'm sorry, anyone on Zoom? If you're on Zoom and you would like to make public comment, please raise your hand. All right, and before we move to close public comment, did anyone have any other public comment for anything that is not fifty-seven Hamilton related? Okay, so should the mayor act in to close public comment then? I think that's, okay, I'll take a motion to close public comment.
We also make a motion of what we're calling this, is a fifty-seven Hamilton, fifty-seven Hopewell, Hopewell fifty-seven, can we just?
Generally, we're calling it Hopewell fifty-seven. Like ten years ago, we called it fifty-seven Hamilton.
So Bob, so we've we've all completed public comment?
Yes.
And now we'll item eight minutes from the. October seventh regular and executive session, we're happy to take a motion for both. Spare first, we have a second. Sherry B. Tuit, all in. Favor, is that right? Or you didn't roll off this? Let's say I think everyone other than. That's a, that's a yes for everyone other than our one extension. All right, next item nine is our second reading of ordinance eight eighty-nine. This is resetting the salary ranges for our staff, so that in a future. Action by resolution, we can actually set salaries, this doesn't actually change anyone's salaries, it just changes the range from which we can. Do that. In the future, so ready to go, I guess, read by.
An ordinance provide for and determine scheduled minimum and maximum salaries for officers and employees of the Borough of Hopewell, County of Mercer, New Jersey.
I think I went a little out of order in the explanation, first, I think you need to add to that?
No, you got it.
Thank you. I'll open the meeting to the public for common questions. On. Ordinance eight eighty-nine for the. Salary ranges, if you're here in person, please go up front, if you're online, please push the raise hand button if you'd like to speak. Seeing none on either spot, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing on ordinance eight eighty-nine, so move. All in favor? Also entertain a motion to adopt ordinance eight eighty-nine. Let's take that, because.
Ms. Hook? Yes. Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. McCallum?
Yes.
Ms. Steeler? Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, item ten, public hearing and second reading on ordinance eight ninety.
Capital ordinance to authorize the replacement of well for pump and materials in the amount of twenty-five thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. And authorize the water main service repairs at eleven East Broad Street in the amount twenty-four thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars. And the expenditure of thirty-five thousand dollars from the Water Utility Capital Improvement Fund. And of fourteen thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars from the Water Utility Fund balance for the clients in there.
Thank you. So these are items that we've needed to do and already done, but so housekeeping exercise, we can now. So we pay ourselves back out of our capital fund, Doug, did you say?
Yeah, we're shopping with money, is what we're doing really, it's capital money that was already funded for other things that. It wasn't needed for the past, and so we're essentially reallocating to take care of our needs. This year, which is a good thing.
And and all of those things that are resulted in thankfully. Positive things, both in leaks being closed up and extra. Extra quantity out of our well with the with the new, the new pump, so kudos to everyone involved. There, I'll open up the meeting to the public. For comments and questions, again, in the public hearing on ordinance eight ninety. Both in person and those on Zoom, if you want to raise, push your raise hand button. Seeing none in either case, I will take a motion to close the meeting to the public for. Eight ninety. All in favor? Take a motion to adopt ordinance eight ninety. David's second.
Ms. Hook? Yeah, Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. McCallum? You have a Steeler? And Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
All right, next item is this ordinance eight ninety-one, which is the. Second reading, public hearing on the ordinance to amend the Hopewell fifty-seven redevelopment area of this item. And item twelve, I will continue to recuse myself from and and the gag will over to Council President View.
An ordinance of the Borough Council of Borough Hopewell, County of Mercer, State of New Jersey, establishing the M-F multifamily redevelopment overlay zone. Amending chapter twelve zoning, article twenty-one, the zone district regulations.
Okay, this was essentially to amend building height restrictions and change some language about stormwater. So. Do you want to get deeper into that or should we?
Well, I I can, so so this is an ordinance that amendment that was crafted after our public hearing. With with the public and the redevelopers on on some various concept plans. It was determined that an alternate concept plan was more agreeable to the majority of of the council and public. So really, what this ordinance amendment has is there's three specific changes, the first one is the height. So we had a long conversation about being able to go up one story on the height, which would shift the massing and the scale of the development. To a more visually appealing layout, so it's four stories and fifty-five feet. Our prior ordinance had three and a half stories and forty-five feet, so it's a change of a half-story and ten feet. In light of of that increased height, we added some language under the other provisions and requirements section of the ordinance. Entitled building placement, so we wanted to make sure that. The essence of that revised concept plan was identified in a meaningful way, so in other words. The the buildings that will be placed along Lafayette and Hamilton would be able to retain that residential. Structure that I think the public really liked and that taller four-story building. Is intended to be towards the rear of the property, we call it the rear of the property, but the. Sort of that eastern side of the property and allow for for that height to take advantage of the natural topography of the site. So even though we're saying it's a four-story, the topography of the site actually dips there, and so the height. Will visually not be as significant in that area. And then finally, there was some clarification to the stormwater regulations to make sure that. All of the proper DEP regulations were cited as well as the borough ordinance on stormwater. And so those are the three main changes to this amendment, they are. Sort of a surgical amendment to reflect that revised concept plan and that is, that is what we have before us. Just as a side note, the planning board did do their master plan consistency review last night, I think they were able to transmit a letter finding that. Because of the minor edits that it was still consistent with the master plan.
Thank you. I'm sending one to council, any comments for opening the hearing to the public?
Oh, and we do have Tara is on Zoom, Tara St. Angela, she is not feeling well, so she did not want to spread the love, and so she is signing in.
And I will take a motion to open hearing to the public. All right, if you in person have any comments, please come up and even if you've already spoken, please identify my state or age again.
Sure, yeah, Susan Bristol, resident of Rockingham Hill. The municipal policy specialist at the Watershed Institute, is also a neighbor of yours. So thank you very much. The reason for my comments specific to the ordinance. Are to better reflect the developers' presentation and testimony at the public meeting, which I don't believe are fully represented in the in this amendment. To better. Be more inclusive of the public's expectations and concerns, to better integrate the standards among themselves in the bulk. The bulk regulations and to. Assure the community that upstream improvements. Will have downstream benefits. And to also reduce the burden, future burden on the planning board, I know there's a lot of chatter about site planning, site planning, site planning. But the most basic things really should be in the ordinance to make their job easier. So regarding the. Introductory sections, whereas. The there was a special meeting, blah, 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 to increase the maximum permitted building height. To allow a four-story building without a change to density, but this should be edited. To include a reduction in impervious cover. So the project that included taller buildings. Was intended to produce the benefit of a reduced impervious cover. The developer said that in the meeting, gave that testimony, it seems to be omitted from this amendment. Also, in terms of reducing impervious cover, the language should be added that it would be a low-impact development, which is also something that that we heard. From the developer's presentation. The next paragraph, whereas the borough sought to clarify the stormwater management regulations. The end of that sentence. Probably should read. That the it wasn't just to clarify the regulations applicable to the development. Under the adopted redevelopment plan, and of course, you also reference the current regulations, which are state regulations. But the intention was, so as not to repeat the problems of the past and one hundred years of pollution and flooding. The intention was to also enhance those stormwater requirements. To protect the neighborhood and downstream neighbors from flooding and excessive runoff. In the bulk and area requirements. I would suggest that you're missing an item under C, minimum building setbacks. There is a front yard, side rear yard, and building to building. But nowhere is there mention of the stream being running across one of the side yards. Your stream ordinance, which does, it's not actually your stream ordinance, I think you call it your natural features ordinance perhaps. But that is a special condition and with the density of development on this site. That could be another small enhancement, where you could actually acknowledge that the setback to the stream. It's not just to a property line or to the current ordinance, but could be increased so that there's more of the landscape that's required. Or open space, I think, is how you're referencing it, could maybe push to buffer the stream a little more. Than is currently required in the ordinance. As I said, item D. Maximum impervious coverage remains at seventy-five percent. That should be reduced, that is why you are approving taller buildings. Was to get the reduced impervious coverage and the developer was offering that at the public meeting. So that needs to be modified to be consistent with item F, which increases the height. In other provisions and requirements, item three. I do believe there's quite a bit of testimony and you have such a talented community with a lot of professionals in it. But it looks as though you've left out the word height. Variations in setback, height, materials, color, and design, including breaks in the facade, I believe there was discussion about breaks. In the heights as well, roof lines, et cetera. On. I already mentioned building placement and obviously it's up to your professionals to decide. How to integrate the stream and the the stream corridor on the edge of the project, but it looks like you added. Language about building placement, item number two. That that specifically relates to where the taller buildings are and the goal is to visibly. Visually reduce the scale of the building, but. There should be a provision here also added that the four-story building should not be a single mass. It should be broken down into the distribution in the project or or broken down. And I believe the developer showed a giant L-shaped structure, which 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 would really limit the. The light, the air, and the localized stormwater management on the site. So I don't think architecturally or environmentally or even visually, if you think about all the people up on the hill. And the sourland looking deep on the town, having to look at that. Huge, single block would not be. would not be consistent with the goals of your wonderful planning efforts. Regarding the stormwater, it's great to see the reference to the current regulations. I would insert after wherever practical, the word enhanced stormwater management shall be designed. And the reason for that, I think you all have had an opportunity to look into this, but the reason for that is that current regulations do not require on a redevelopment site the same standards that would be required in a so-called greenfield. However, the developer actually said that he would be designing the stormwater as if it were a greenfield. But that isn't actually, as far as I can tell, anyway, it's not in this ordinance, and it should be. And the reason for that is when an older site is redeveloped, the current requirements are easily met and do not provide much in the way of rate reduction or volume reductions. A municipality can adopt a redevelopment standard that requires not only a reduction in runoff rates, but also a volume reduction through onsite retention. That isn't something you need to have elsewhere in your ordinance. Is that can be incorporated now with the amendment? And it's very, it's particularly relevant, not only to the site, but to the whole neighborhood and your past problems, flooding problems. The only two things that I would add to the ordinance amendment would first of all be maybe the most obvious one, which is we keep hearing about the concept plan, but there is no concept plan. So I mean, we might be using this word plan in different ways, but I think the planner is referring to the plan as the document, the verbiage that describes the project. But the developer presented imagery. There's clearly a conceptual idea about how the site gets developed, and it doesn't appear anywhere. Unless I'm wrong, and you all can produce it just to help us understand that. But I mean, there should be a planned view of the concept that generated all those renderings that were presented as three-dimensional renders. Finally, I've seen in many other towns redevelopment plans, documents. At a minimum, they have some base information that's publicly available, not difficult or expensive to generate, which shows the wetlands, the stream corridors, the buffers, and the flood zones. And I believe at that hearing, the developer did acknowledge that the whole property is in a flood zone. And then he started to discuss how he would be bringing in fill or changing the grade or altering the ground. And that obviously will have three-dimensional impacts on how this integrates with the street and the community. But that seems to be an oversight and would actually be helpful for the developer or the council and the planning board down the road to have those things illustrated and included. So again, thank you so much for your attention and your patience and your time. It's wonderful to be a part of this community in so many ways, and I thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
I'm glad I read the ordinance, because I think there's a couple of things that just need some refinement. Maybe there were typos or whatever. But of course, I was a big proponent for the four-story in the back to have two and a half-story in the front. I say the front, the residential, right? We have two lots, four sides per lot, so we have eight sides of property to deal with for this project. So on the major property, which I believe is three point one three acres or three point two three acres, the two residential, let's see, the building placement, I think it's well-worded, except it says three stories. It needs to say two and a half stories. That's what the houses in Hopewell Borough are. Two full stories with a gable roof. Gable roof with an attic with maybe some dormers. What we don't want is a three-story building that would not fit in with the residential character of Hopewell Borough, specifically Lafayette Street. And to Susan's point, if the property is being raised up because of, and I'm all for that, because we want to fix our water problems and that sort of thing. But that's going to make it even taller than the neighbors across the street. So unless there's something I'm missing here, but I think it's two and a half stories, and it's, that could be three and a half stories or four and a half, well, four stories, I'm sorry. Four stories for the two buildings kind of by twine and by the big trees, because they buffer to the residences on Elm Street and to where, you know, the commercial area. But two and a half stories on Hamilton and Lafayette. I don't know if you want to make a comment or if someone I'm missing here or. Then the other, the point is, is the setbacks. I don't remember unless I missed it. I don't remember seeing setbacks saying need to be the average of the traditional setbacks on Lafayette Street.
And Hamilton.
And Hamilton, right. And I mean, when I'm excluding that, are the newer houses they built behind, on the other side by the, next to the shopping center. Those setbacks are too big. They should have never been done. We don't put cars in front of houses in Hopewell with driveways and then parking parallel. That's some developer trick. So and I know the new developer want to do that, because he needs to have as much internal on that property to build to have his driveway and parking lot and whatnot. But he, I believe he still have a ten-foot setback for Lafayette and Hamilton. And I'm saying that needs to be what Lafayette is, which I believe is fifteen to twenty feet to have a setback. I know that makes it tighter on the inside, but the idea is we're not trying to build a wall. We're trying to build houses that feel, have the same feel. When you go down that street, they're going to blend. And also a second point to that is the trees. Jeffrey Albert made a point, saying he wants to keep those wonderful, like they're twelve or fifteen trees along Lafayette Street. They're very mature. They need some cleaning up, some trim work. They need a haircut. But they have canopies that I believe thirty feet. So it's not physically possible to have a setback of ten feet. If the calf of thirty is, in most countries, fifteen, check the on the map. So you can't do that, and you don't want the tree right next to your house, believe me. We've had squirrel attacks in my house because of that. Can't have trees next to your house. So and David, we've spoken about that months ago, that to protect those trees, you have to make a setback at least fifteen to twenty feet. And it also blends in. Last thing I'd like to add is the other thing that makes Hopewell Hopewell is not only the street, the sidewalk, and the house, and then trees. You know, so I should say, street, trees, sidewalk, house. What am I missing? Porches. Porches are mediation zone. It doesn't belong to the house entirely. It doesn't belong to the street. But it's that, that area in between, and that's what makes Hopewell Hopewell. When people are on their porch, and when we slow down to twenty-five miles per hour, which I'm so poor, then we get to talk to people. And his, the little rendering there that shows a little canopy with a stoop, that's not talking to people. It's not even room to put a chair. I can talk to somebody if they don't have a chair. Then do it. It's just standing up. So I think those things work, like I said before, detailed words matter. And we need to put in that ordinance, the things, the qualities that make Hopewell Hopewell. And that's why we all chose to live here. Because this is not some suburban town where people don't go out on porches and are internal and just do the thing in the backyard. This is about being out on the sidewalk and enjoying your neighbors and your town. Thank you very much.
Andrew Roffhorn, Lafayette. I sent a letter and email. I don't know.
We did. We received it. Yes, thank you.
All right. So just to keep a brief on the three, I basically think there are three issues. And I think two of them came up just now. One is just so out of scale with the rest of the town. And I know the redevelopment law allows a little bit of on its face inconsistency with the master plan. You know, if it's justified, you can make some out of scale changes, but this, I think I measured roughly Catholic church steep falls, maybe eighty-five feet. And that, I can see that from Lafayette. This being only ten feet from the curb, I think right now, the Somerset line of the building at its closest to the curb is nineteen feet. And by the garage door heading towards Valley Oil, it's thirty-six feet. And there is a tree there that almost touches the front of the building, where it's about twenty-five feet from the curb. So you probably won't be able to have any trees along there if the building is ten feet from the curb. The other issue with that height is it's going to cast a shadow. At fifty-five feet in the morning, twine will be in shades probably until ten AM this time of year, maybe eleven AM. As I mentioned in the letter, on December twenty-first, which would be a big shopping day for twine, that shadow at the sun's peak in the sky, the building, a fifty-five-foot building would cast a shadow over one hundred feet long, which would still keep twine in the dark in the middle of the day. And that's assuming that it's at the current grade. I know the planner mentioned that the grade, the natural topography has a little slope to it, so it won't necessarily be fifty-five feet. But as we've mentioned before, we don't know, since the entire lot, I notice, is in a flood zone, they may have to raise the grade in certain areas. If it's five feet high, a fifty-five-foot building will effectively be sixty feet high from the curb, from the street level. So, or sixty feet. So now we're talking an even longer shadow. And that whole side of the street, which would presumably be where the street parking will be, will be in shade the entire day. Cars in the winter will have frost on them the entire day. And that will also have additional effects. The speaker from the watershed mentioned there will be inequitable access to direct sunlight. This time of year, that side of the building running along Somerset gets no direct sunlight at all. And that's just, you know, the consequence of being in the northern hemisphere. But by forcing that building, which the builder presented at that meeting at the end of the summer, that's basically just a block. You have nearly half the residents of that building getting no direct sunlight. Even in the summer, June twenty-first, middle of the summer, they won't get sunlight if it runs along the east-west line of Somerset Street until three PM in the afternoon, nothing in the morning. And again, that's with an even longer shadow across the street all day long. In the winter, never gets any sunlight. And as I mentioned in my letter, I know state affordable housing law has requirements that affordable housing be distributed by unit size. So if there's a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom, I believe affordable housing units must have a representation of each size. But there's nothing in that law that says all affordable units must have equal access to sunlight like the rest of the houses. So what's to stop the developer opening all the houses in the shade facing the railroad tracks and the more desirable units on the sunny side of the building? There's nothing in the ordinance that would prevent that. And I believe OPO would want to make sure everyone has equal access to sunlight, air, and lesser noise. Not only that, their energy costs are going to be different, especially in the winter without that sunlight. In the summer, maybe they get a slight advantage, requiring less cooling. Their heating costs will be higher on that side of the building. And this, this is with the assumption that, you know, the building is basically a block with an L. And maybe with the center hallway, half units on this side, half, you know, it's on this side. If the units run front to back, that would not be an issue. But then I highly doubt that's going to happen, because that's going to require more access to each unit, which would basically make a larger footprint. And that's not something, you know, that's something we're trying to avoid. I don't know why or if we've asked it about and the first level be partially underground. Or you could, doesn't have to be like a window this small, but it could be partially underground, still have the sunlight and effectively lowering the overall height of the building. But I think a potentially, a building that is potentially sixty feet above the street, maybe more, you know, we don't know how it's going to be graded. Presumably, it will slope down towards the stream at some point. As I understand it, height is taken from the average of all four sides and measured at the front and center. So one side sloping down towards the stream, it ends up being sixty-five feet lower and not, not effectively higher, but much greater than I saw. I can't think of anything in town or even within the borough of Pennington. Not even, I can't think of any residential building that is anywhere near four stories tall, anywhere around here. And it is just so out of character that even if permissible under the law, it just doesn't make sense for Hopewell. And going back to what I said before, do we have anything, any assurance from the developer that just because we build it, everyone is going to come? As I mentioned before, this, we're trapped in this green belt now. And apartments by nature are more transient resident, short-term. Not typically going to live there for ten, twenty years. So if you know you're going to live someplace for a year or two, or you're going to take Hopewell, when you have Princeton, Montgomery, Pennington, Hopewell Township, all with great school systems, but those with better access, where you don't have to drive ten, fifty minutes to grocery store or ten, fifty minutes to hear there. So, you know, I just hope the council will consider the shadowing effect of kind of locking this tall building into that orientation. And builder presented a block, but not necessarily a broken architectural design, which would allow more equal access to sunlight. And there's nothing in the ordinance that would prevent that, nor is there anything that would prevent all the affordable housing being in the worst location in the building. So I hope that's something we can add to the order. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Paul Matsko, East Broad Street. So I appreciate a lot the comments from the last couple of folks here. And like a lot of really good, well-intentioned, I think, in isolation, just solid ideas. I am concerned about something, though. New York Times journalist Ezra Klein has this phrase that he called everything, everything-bait liberalism. It's the idea that there's a bad habit, and he particularly is applying it to like blue states like New Jersey, why they struggle to build anything, infrastructure, housing, as opposed to red states where they're very, you know, oftentimes hostile to government, you know, government action. And so cities, in a state like New Jersey, you have good intentions, and we want to get things done. We want the government to look out for its citizens, and yet we can't accomplish things. We end up clocking up infrastructure and housing with lots of regular term requirements, and so it falls behind. And so this concept of everything-bait liberalism throwing a bunch of very good things at a problem, trying to get everything possible, all the possible. Um, at the problem, trying to get everything possible, all the possible risks mitigated. And every possible upside track, every project just guarantees that projects never get redundant. And so, you know, potentially, um, it's often applied to things like, uh, you know, should we have the CHIPS Act and do industrial policy? And build, you know, semiconductor chips in the United States, or should we have the Inflation Reduction Act, lots of industrial policy for the Biden administration? But the problem is that the, to get the money, companies will have to go, they have to check every single box, it's not enough that they're gonna promise to build a factory. That builds new chips, they also have to promise money for uh, local environmental programs, they have to do a bunch of, you know, local mitigation. Fireout concerns, um, they have to guarantee, you know, certain kind of hiring practices above and beyond what's normal for the area, they have to. And you just check down the list, check, 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 check and end up with a death by a thousand paper cuts. Um, with no recognition that a lot of these things involve trade offs. And so I'm concerned that with a project like this, that we have a bunch of really good ideas that in isolation might be good, but that accumulated. Combined and ultimately end up killing the project. Um. And nothing gets done, so you end up with the worst case scenario, which is we have an aging building. That's environmental waste site, has for God's sakes, it has radium in it, sitting there just waiting, falling apart. And we just cross our fingers and hope the fires and break out and burn the thing down that release all those toxins into the environment. So the worst possible outcome is that nothing happens because we try to make this project do everything. Right? So that's my concern, it's, I think a lot of these are really good ideas, but in this particular case for this resolution. It makes sense to me to push the specific questions, like can we, how big should the setbacks be, should be fifteen feet, twenty feet, ten feet? Uh, wastewater mitigation, what exact language should we use for that wastewater mitigation? You know, low impact might be a legal term that has lots of implications, not just the generic description. And it's all these very legitimate questions, we deal with them when we have the specific plans in front of us. And we talk, you guys talk to the developer about tweaking them. In recognition that there are trade offs for each of them, but right now, if we so shackle the requirement by writing it in code. There's no room for that negotiation, no ability to recognize those trade offs. So here I'd favor like. As minimalist as we can within reason, so that we can make those trade offs, have those negotiations. When we're specifically hearing the report on wastewater, the report on traffic, report on bang, 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 bang. So I think there is a time for all these very legitimate considerations to be brought up and discussed. But I think shackling the process now risks warding off the developer. And we end up in the worst possible scenario, which is ten years from now having the same conversation about a site that's even worse condition. Thank you.
Anyone else in person?
Well. I understand what you're, oh, what you're saying. The only problem with it is that ordinances are lost and you can't really negotiate. With a developer who's following the law, saying, I'm allowed to do ten foot setbacks. And and the planning work and have a conversation, well, we wish it really could be fifteen. And he can say, that's very nice, but I've already paid my engineers and my architects to do ten. And that would involve me spending more money, would you fund it for us? And we'll, of course, we're the borough that doesn't have any money, say, no, we can't fund that for you, uh, well, then I'm gonna keep what I have. So that's the reason why you have to have some of these, I agree, you can't have everything. Because the bagel everything thing, but some of these are so easy to do. I mean, what's, what's fifteen feet instead of ten, does that, would that kill the project? I mean, why not? You know, we have to stand up for what we want. And the developer's gonna have what, standing up for what he wants. And it's just like marriage, right? You don't get everything you want. Believe me, you know, I mean, you have to compromise. Right? So you have to, you have to come in with that, that we're a borough that has certain. Certain qualities that we want, developer wants certain qualities that he wants. And we've seen it, he seems to be a really thinking, um, collaborative type person. I know, talk with him. So let's not be afraid. To stand up for what's right for our borough. And let him stand up for what's right for him. Make a project and meet in the middle. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in person for public comment? I think now, if there's anyone online, if you'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand. You'll be promoted. Melissa, you can, you can begin when you're ready.
Um, thank you, um, I I'm so fascinated, I believe it was Andrew who talked about the light and um. Uh, the darkness, if they just do that one side on Somerset there and the fact that. I mean, that's just one business, but it will be in complete darkness. All the time, which is not really good for retail, um, but um, when um, I, we asked the um, developer. I asked him what was happening on Somerset Street, was it gonna just be all back doors? Or all front doors and he said, oh, it'll just be a mix. So. If it's all back doors, that's very not street friendly in it, so. I just wanna put that out there and the thing about the light, that's really interesting, the no natural light for the apartments and for um. Twine and whatever might end up in twine someday. A dispensary, no, I'm just kidding, um, that was all I had to say, thanks.
Thank you. Beth Young, when you're ready, you can start. So Beth, yeah, make sure that you are unmuted, please.
Hi, I'm Beth Young, I live at thirty two Elm Street. Um, I was, I thought about the same thing walking around, I walk my dog around that building almost every day. And I did think about the same thing with this, with the height of the building and that that would cast a big shadow. Um, and uh, you know, again, on these beautiful mornings, walking around that building. It's a big difference in in that area, you know, and the shadows would change with the way the sun is shining around there. Um, so it's something, it is, it's very high for our town, that four stories, but. The second thing I was thinking was, I, I hope, I know this will be part of the thought, but the lighting. Is also not only the the shadow, but also the kinds of lighting. That will have to surround that building or those buildings. Um, and what effect that will have on the neighborhood, so it just was something that I hadn't heard. Uh, spoken about yet, that I wanted to bring forward, I went out in the backyard to take my. Uh, you know, we live so close and so I went out to take my dog out and it's beautiful in the back here. Um, and so the lighting would probably change, but I I hope. I hope that is consistent with the town, um, and not. Big, bright, tall lights that are at the end of the street. So, thank you.
Thank you. So anyone else online? Okay, last call for a public comment. I, I will take a motion to close public comment.
I'll move.
Do we want to? Respond to a couple of comments, and the lighting one actually.
Yeah, that's amazing.
Pretty easy, Joanna, you wanna help with that or Bob, maybe, because we do have a lighting order.
Yeah, we do, the borough does have a lighting ordinance. Yeah, and we're looking at more, so yeah, the the um, the land development ordinance does have a. Um, a lighting ordinance that we use for all applications and and there's a variety of standards. But mainly its whole intent is that everything is downward shielded, that it's, you know, has the same character. That it doesn't create light trespass or or glare, um, and so we, we always use those standards when we're looking at.
Right, and and relatively low color temperature also, so we don't have this, you know, seven thousand K winding.
And when they come in for site plan, that actually one of their plans is a lighting plan and they have to show. Not only where lighting is placed on on the property, but also the types of fixtures, what what color temperature it is, you know. You know, cut off at a certain time and everything like that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, which is good. Um, and obviously we're having discussions as community about the dark skies initiative. Going further down that goal, to deal with light pollution, but um, which is a good thing.
And I do think a lot of the um, concerns that were brought up during public comment will actually be addressed in site plan, if I'm not mistaken.
Right, so we, you know, during site plan and and anybody's welcome to go on the on the borough's website and we actually have. Um, on the planning board website is is our checklist or that you can actually see all of the. Um, reports and information that's required as part of site plan, um, before they can even come to the board. And and all that is publicly available and and actually now we post everything to the website too, so you don't have to come into the municipal building and. Flip through pages, um, also during the um. Redevelopment agreement, there was some additional information added um, in that agreement that would be provided specific to this redevelopment site. Um, and I know Tara, is she still on, did we lose her?
She's, she's there.
Is she there?
Okay, I'm here.
Oh, okay, yeah, so Tara also incorporated some additional information that's gonna be required at site plan that is not typically required. But because of the site and the magnitude of the site, um, we spent a lot of time looking at that. Um, and and making sure really we're um, capturing all of the the concerns. Uh, so yeah, a lot of that does get looked at at site plan.
But just a a comment uh, about the. The uh, wanna make sure I got it right, that everything bagel liberalism is interesting thing, I mean. As I've always understood it, Joanna, with our conversations over the years, we redevelopment plans can be. Range from being highly predictive, almost down to the site plan level, or much less so. And there's a whole sort of spectrum there and it depends on. What your objectives are, but also what kind of flexibility you need to actually have a site be developable. So there's this tension there, right? Because everybody wants a certain certainty about things. Um. And this site obviously is got multiple challenges, which is one of the reasons why. There haven't been that many suitors, if you will, over the years, or at least ones that we're looking at realistically. Um. And so interesting, like if you're talking about the stream, I mean, I was just looking at the survey and so the stream is roughly fifteen feet. Approximately, that doesn't run a straight line, but about fifteen feet from the eastern boundary. And under the current um, flood hazard rules, you'd have a riparian. Uh, zone of fifty feet from the center of the stream, so now you have sixty five feet from that eastern property.
Top of bank, I think, yeah.
What's that?
I think it's top of bank, but.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so, oh, top of bay, so that's even, not even from the center, so it's gonna be wider than that, let's just say minimally at sixty five feet. So the overall width of that main lot is about, well, it ranges between four hundred and four hundred and forty five feet, top of buck. So, so basically with the stream. Um, even if you just measure from center, um, plus that riparian zone, that's fifteen percent of the property right there, the where you can't go. Um, and the other thing is, and again, Bob, you can stop me anytime. But my understanding of when we're dealing with the flood hazards here, which are, I'll just mention, people regulate it both at the state level and also at the borough level. Um, you know, you're not allowed to basically do anything on that site that's gonna increase the flood risk to surrounding properties. And what that means is you have this kind of zero sum thing going on where. You have to raise the grade in some places, well, first of all, you have to design, figure out what the design flood elevation is for the site, which FEMA hasn't yet done. And you have to follow the complicated formulas that the state has, again, Bob, you can just raise your hand anytime, I'm sorry, okay. Um, but I want people to sort of visualize this, cause it's just one element of it, so you you have to figure out, um, using this. Relatively recently updated set of rules that are supposed to take into account more more realistically, uh, the increase in severity of. Um, frequency of storms. Um, and and develop using this complicated formula, what you think this base flood elevation is. And then your buildings have to be two or three feet above that minimally, I think, I can't remember what the difference is, but they have to be above it, let's just put it that way. So if you're raising the grade, you're adding fill probably to certain areas. But remember, you have this area, think of it almost like a, water's coming in through a culvert, it's going out through a culvert, it's like a basin. And you can't reduce the flood storage volume within that area, so if you're gonna add. And that gets to be very complicated, so what I'm trying to explain is. If we, for example, were to widen, put an additional buffer around that riparian zone and take out another, you know, fifty feet. We may be placing restrictions on the possible options to make this thing work. Um, and we don't know what the options are that are gonna make it work, so one of the reasons, this is just an example of why I think we we need to have some flexibility. And relying more on the site plan process at the end, or not at the end, but in the next stage. Is because we could impose some constraints on this today that seem like a good idea, but we don't fully understand the ramifications of them. And we don't understand what they might do in terms of viability of the project. So, and it's, there's no perfect answer to this, but I think that's, in in my mind anyway. That's an example of one of the reasons why we're being. Correct, fairly flexible in our approach with the redevelopment plan, with the notion that when we get to the site plan application. Flood risk absolutely has to be addressed, I mean, at the state regulations, we have our own regulations that are piggybacking around the state ones. Bob, you're the flood plan administrator, so you're the czar who has to, you know, review this, and our professionals have to review these applications and make sure. That they comply with all the rules and that they're not creating flood hazards that don't already exist, the same to the stormwater and anything else, so um. Again, I think I have a pretty good confidence in the level of rigor and the level of detail at the site plan end. Um, and a reasonable degree of comfort with the fact that we are being less prescriptive overall in the redevelopment plan, that's just. Well, two cents on it.
No, I I I think you're right there, I mean. So, you know, when we look at zoning as a whole and not even on a specific redevelopment site. You know, the goal of zoning is to provide those limits of development. And not only do they provide the limits of development, but they provide that level of expectation that not only the planning board is looking at, but a developer is looking at. So everybody can come in and say, these are the setbacks, this is the height, this is the purview's coverage, and we have all the other sections of the ordinance, even though. We don't cover all the sections in the ordinance, all of the other sections in the ordinance apply, so. Your lighting still applies, your signage still applies, your um, landscape and buffering standards still apply. Um, so this is really just addressing sort of the bulk and the placement and the scale en masseing. And I know there's, uh, you know, you wanna make sure that your vision is being sort of conveyed on the site. Um, to a certain extent, but you're right, once you get into site designs, sometimes things shift a little bit in unexpected ways. Does that a bad thing? No, that's the reality of any development, um, they never go according to the exact plan. And we don't know what that is until they get in and start doing their engineering and their design. Um, so you're right, it's it's not that it's, we're being completely, um, you know, too flexible. But it's understanding the the realities of the site, um, and the site is is. You know, one site, it's not, we're not applying this across zone, so um, we're looking at the specifics of the site.
I mean, if you had a site that was just level, it was nowhere near a stream corridor, it didn't have any other, it's a nice green field site.
We'd have different.
You know, I'd be like, fine, let's put a hundred foot buffer around the street, and you know, all the meaning, because you have a broader campus to work with. And it doesn't mean that we will do anything to make the project work, I'm not suggesting that, but I do think. That there has to be a level of flexibility, I mean, the the burden is on the redeveloper to find a way to make this work. Within all the other frameworks and rules that we have. Um, and I mean, even down to, I mean, I understand, for example, that the concern about trees and there's sort of a critical root zone. You know, more or less in the drip line of the tree, but I mean, I I look in the past, having been on planning work for fourteen years, I mean, we had an application recently, I think, in Oklahoma apartments. There was a lot of debate about one particular tree, like, okay, guys, you're gonna move that driveway around that tree and that tree is gonna stay there, you know. I mean, that's the level of granularity that we get into on these site plan applications, now that wasn't required. Necessarily specifically in something on the study, when we have a tree ordinance and you're not basically supposed to be, which is a good thing, we're not supposed to be uh, doing something in a redevelopment. Development that's going to kill the trees. But, sorry, but the floor is, I'm sorry, Andrew, I think the floor is closed, but but I, I know you have something to say, but I'll leave that up to.
There there will be another um public comment period.
Okay.
At the end.
Yeah, you're the one who gave it up, I mean, sorry, but but um, but um, you know, I just. Through experience over the years, observed that we we have actually, I mean, I think the fact that you don't. Have a specific hard and fast rule on a particular detail doesn't mean that it doesn't get taken care of in site plan, because there are broader ter- broader concerns and. Goals that are built into our rules that the planning board takes into account, and is that, you think that's a fair assessment? In other words, if you don't. Absolutely rigidly prescribe this particular thing, it can't happen, or, you know.
Right, I mean, you know, what we we often talk about is is what is a site plan by right, so even if a site plan comes in and they meet all of the requirements of the ordinance, they're still coming in. For that site plan approval, and oftentimes it happens during the site plan that. The board or the professionals make recommendations, they make changes, that even though it's by right by the bulk standards. We're still looking at how that site's going to function, how it operates, what it looks like. Um, we may, you know, they may have the right landscaping in there, but we don't like the mix of trees, you know, like, we get into that level of detail and make those recommendations and. And, you know, and developers will often just, you know, revise their site plans according to to the professionals' reports. Um, and toward comments and public comment. Um, that's not an uncommon situation, in fact, that's the whole process of site plan.
Thank you. Um, right, so, but I have a motion to. Where do you do?
Motion to adopt.
Okay, I'm sorry, I will take a motion to adopt ordinance eight ninety-one. So, second.
Ms. Hook, Ms. Hook, yes, Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Ms. Steeler?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes. All right, and I'm gonna need your help again, Reggie, I've never done a resolution before, so.
Okay, and motion to approve resolution.
Okay, well, that's easy enough. Um, I will take a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four one of eight. Which is.
Oh, oh, this is the resolution um.
The appointment of the redeveloper and the redevelop.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we should talk about that.
I thought I thought it was the one and I'll get it, my apologies, um.
I've been talking, I've been talking too much tonight.
Do you want, do you want Tara to introduce?
Yeah. I think that's a good. She's at four. Sorry, um, so the re- the redevelopment agreement that we have here, it's a typically, these are. Almost a form document that you can tweak here and there to fit your specific redevelopment. In this case, this redevelopment agreement is um much more specific, much more longer, much more longer, much longer. Than a lot of redevelopment agreements that I've worked on that you'll see um just because of the difficulties of this site. Specific things that we worked on in this agreement to address the. Unique qualities of this property, where there are um extensive sections about what is required of the. Of the developer during the cleanup process um during the uh staging and construction process to make sure that. Any contamination from the property is properly contained, as well as to protect the uh stream on the property. Um, additionally, we laid out some. Uh, more enhanced requirements for their site plan approval, uh, we made it clear that they need to do a traffic study. And set forth what that traffic study has to include, and specifically looking at intersections. Within the vicinity of of the project. Additionally, we have asked for, or not asked for, we have required that they submit as part of site plan approval. A uh school impact study showing um. Uh, what school age children will be generated from this project, as well as um. Uh, an impact study on emergency services. And the uh developer has. The proposed developer has agreed to supply all of those as part of the site plan approval. Um, other aspects of it, it does um include a provision. Uh, that. The uh, it 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 does talk about. A pilot agreement, but in very vague terms, just because a pilot is an option under a redevelopment agreement, it just includes. That this, essentially, this agreement is not a pilot agreement, uh such will have to be done by separate application, et cetera.
It's a separate ordinance.
Separate ordinance, yes, well, the developer has to make an application and then the. Uh, council will have to consider an ordinance at a later time. Um, trying to think of any other kind of highlights that we had from this agreement that were very. Specific to this property, again, there's a lot of.
The performance bond, would you like to talk about that in there?
Yes, so that is standard within any. Agreement, uh, the performance bond, and that goes to. Under the municipal land use law, the performance bond is posted by the by the redeveloper. Ten percent is required in cash, the other ninety percent can be posted via surety bond or letter of credit. And this guarantees that um certain public improvements will be installed i- in the event that. Essentially, the developer abandons the project, so this will guarantee. Uh, installation of those public improvements, utility extensions, sidewalks, anything that the. Essentially, anything that the borough would be interested in as a public entity, making sure is not in a. A dangerous or harmful condition. Um, those those are guaranteed, so in the event the project is abandoned, the the borough has. Us- essentially a pot of money to call upon to complete. Uh, any of those quote public improvements, again, that usually your sidewalks, your stormwater infrastructure, um. Even if there's any street trees that needed to be replaced or included, um, any any buffering, landscaping, things like that. Um, let's see. And then, were there. And and of course, the agreement um. Sort of binds the redeveloper to comply with the redevelopment plan and make the proper site plan approval. In um in compliance with all the requirements of the redevelopment plan. And then it includes, because this is an inclusionary development, it does include the. Commitment to provide the affordable housing consistent with current rules. Uh, they have to provide, they have to provide proper insurance, um. It sets forth the process uh. Where finally certificates of occupancy will be issued and sort of everything that they have to do to meet those requirements eventually if the project is approved and then built. And we also, oh, another provision of this agreement that is very specific to this property, because it is in. The downtown, we did have um. The strict requirements about your construction hours, parking during construction, um, how they access the site so as not to. Uh, create any nuisance or other hazards to the surrounding businesses and resi- residents. And. Think that is it, that is very, you know. Uh, addresses the unique nature of this project, unless anyone had any questions about any specific provisions.
No, I I just, but I want to comment, I mean, I read through the whole thing today, I mean, I read through before and worked on it before, but today is when I just went from stem to stern and and I. I say personally, I was just really happy, because I feel like this thing, it is very detailed, it is very prescriptive, it has a lot of protections in it. And I know some of those are standard boilerplate things, but there's a bunch of other stuff that you mentioned, Tara, that we added. Um, maybe literally down to. If you're applying for a demolition permit, and one of the things, Tara, that you. Told us about early on in the process of the ordinance, but I thought was so important was, if you have. Areas in the existable state rules or ordinances that are just, maybe they're vaguely worded, and not specific about certain things, or requirements that you think really need to be there. That are specific to the site, you can put them in this agreement, and by putting them in the agreement, it makes them enforceable, right? And so, for example, I discovered in my review of the process early on that. The state doesn't really have a lot of requirements for demolition permits, I mean, you have to do asbestos remediation and lead, but it kind of leaves it up to the towns. To figure out all the other things, the standards that you have to need to get a demo permit, and every town is different. So knowing the nature of this site and knowing that it's a brownfield site, and then it's in a neighborhood, and then obviously one of your concerns, for example, about dust and that kind of stuff. We were able to put in a whole host of requirements. You know, based on an understanding of how these things normally are done, to protect everybody in the community, to make sure that, you know, we have the ability to oversee it, also, we have a communication element in there too. Which basically requires that once you start site work, maybe from the day that you put that sign up. I think we had bi-weekly, bi-monthly communication requirements with the town, so that we have a heads up on, you know, what's going on. We know what the major milestones are that are coming, okay, we're gonna start running trucks out of the neighborhood tomorrow, whatever it is, or not tomorrow, but you know, two weeks. Down to working on which way trucks can go if they're moving things in and out of the site, with all of that level of specificity, recognizing that. This would be a big project in the middle of the neighborhood. And so um. I I guess, just reflecting on it, I think in the end, looking at all this, I I think it's a really important. And powerful document, and I would encourage, uh, once we've executed it and post the final, I would encourage everybody who's wanted to decide to. To read it, I mean, it's it's a long read, but um I I hope that it will give people a sense of confidence. About the level of thought that's gone into this in terms of. Providing a um a protective framework, if you will.
And the other thing I do want to point out is we made sure that this agreement had actual teeth in a way for the borough to enforce it, so a lot of those provisions. Um, that are there to protect the surrounding neighborhood from any any nuisance or other hazards. Are enforceable by your construction code official, your zoning officer, and they're enforced with, they can issue fines, but the big important thing that they can do, which gets the developers' attention. Is they can issue stop work orders. Uh, until the violations are remedied, and that's where, that's where your real enforcement power lies, because every day a project is shut down. It it costs the developer money, and so it will. I I think it uh makes sure that they comply with all of those items that council thought were important to include. Uh, to make sure that the construction phase of the project isn't too much of a nuisance to the surrounding um residences and businesses.
And the other thing is it gives you something that the redeveloper can show to their contractors and say, these are the specs for, in in terms of. How you operate in this environment, you know, um, I've just known from running earthwork projects myself, you know, this way. You have a detailed document that you can then convey to them, so everybody knows what the expectations are.
Yes, and I think uh you pointed out that there is a a reporting requirement and everything um in this, I think. The sort of enhanced monitoring required, we require of the project is important, because I have to say, in my experience, nine times out of ten. Those that are violating the developer's agreement and the conditions of approval during construction, it's not the actual developer, it's their subcontractors. And so having such a detailed document, good, it's a good point that they can show their subcontractors, these are all the things that you have to comply with, here it is in writing. And also requiring them, you know, to be reporting, et cetera, it gives, it gives the redeveloper. Much more uh, uh, much more of an obligation to be on site more and make sure that they're really keeping an eye on their on their subcontractors.
Right, and make sure we know, we keep the community informed, so there aren't any surprises, you know.
I I personally want to say thank you to Tara and David and everyone that works and worked, and thank you Doug for finding the. Extra money that we spent on our professionals to revisit this and go over and over and over, uh, because speaking for myself, I can feel very comfortable. That we have captured everything that is important to us, to the community, and um I feel really good about moving forward, so thank you to everyone who worked on this.
Can I just, maybe one, this might be minor comment, but I was very happy to see. How specific it was regarding the construction fencing, you know, six foot chain link fence with perhaps, you know, I've. Been on projects where we've had to fight with the developer constantly because his perimeter snow fencing. Um, falling down, zip tied together, so.
Well, a good example is actually what they did at Hopeful Apartments, they had a six foot fence with a privacy screen, and. I I thought that was a good example, and it seemed like a reasonable thing to ask, so.
Well, thank you all, um, I'm sorry, I was, I thought we were doing the appointment of the redeveloper and redeveloper's agreement separately. My mistake, but we are doing them together, so if everyone.
Oh, so, okay, so this is doing two things, one is is it's authorizing you and Reggie to execute the redevelopers agreement. And then the other thing is appointing the developer, so. Any comments to our professionals on just that, how that is part of the process or the the appointment, I mean, it's it's a requirement, right, isn't it, under the.
It's a requirement of the local redevelopment law, even if it's not a borough owned property, if it's not a property that is um. Under an uh condemnation redevelopment plan, you still have to appoint the redeveloper. Um, and in this case, it is the contract purchaser of the property.
All right, so if everyone is good, I will take a motion to approve resolution twenty five four one zero eight. I'll second.
I'm going to do your role, Ellen. Um, Ms. Hook?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Ms. Steeler?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes. Can I bring the mayor back in?
Thank you all, um. So now we, I believe we're rejoining the agenda at thirteen. Uh, for the consent resolutions, I would. Take a resolution for twenty, uh, excuse me, a motion for resolutions twenty twenty-four dash one oh three to one oh seven. Skip one away, which I believe did, uh, and nine through one eleven. Um, of course, if anyone would like to pull anything aside, uh, for further discussion, we'd have to do that as well. Wait a second.
Okay.
Ms. Hook?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yeah.
Ms. Steeler?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Thank you, um, item fourteen, I mentioned two proclamations this evening, uh, one was a late addition, it didn't actually make the agenda, but uh. Excuse me, um, uh, December, we will be celebrating and um. Supporting uh Communities of White Project as we do each year. Uh, thank um Council of Millennials for uh spearheading that in in years past, I believe, and this year as well, uh, I think there will be some additional details coming. Um, and possibly a kickoff event at Borough Hall that evening, so uh please be able to look out for that, um, and the second proclamation. Uh, is the seventeenth of November, the Sunday, uh, the second Calvary Baptist Church is. Um, celebrating their one hundred. Do I have this right, Reggie, sorry, uh.
Twenty-seven.
You want twenty-seven? Hundred twenty-seventh anniversary, uh, and we have a proclamation uh honoring them as well, uh, for their uh support and longevity here in Hopeful Borough. With that, I would happily take a motion to approve payments for payment. One second. In a second.
Okay.
Um, Ms. Hook? Yes, Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Ms. Steeler? Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Alright, next we'll do our, um, council liaison reports. Uh, Deb, since you're, I don't know, online, wanna go first?
Uh, sure, um, the library board meets, um, next week on the twelfth and, um, that's really all I have. Um, the recreation committee is not gonna be meeting again until twenty twenty-five. Um, and I've been a little bit out of it with having surgery and being laid up, so, um, that's all I really have tonight.
Right, thank you. Sure, no, okay, uh, Samara, you wanna go next?
I just have a couple things, um, open space met for our last meeting for this year. Few things, Alan Hershey is now a Hopewell Township resident and the Pennington Borough rep. So if anybody knows anybody in Pennington Borough that might be interested, um, in participating, reach out to their manager. Uh, we have three acres planning grants. We talked a little bit about, um, recommendations for possible locations for community amenities, uh, with the new homes being built in the valley, um, looking at ways to, um, find the best spaces to make the best use of open space to, to make inclusive great environments for our residents. Uh, so there's some talk of potentially creating a community amenities committee, which would include, um, a member of the Wolsey Park Advisory Committee, a member of the rec committee, the historical committee, and then somebody from the open space advisory committee. Um, to be a part of that, sort of talk about what to do with the open spaces in the valley and how to, um, make sure that they're as inclusive as possible. Um, Board of Health, a couple of dates there, Jeanne Waldman has resigned. Um, she's agreed to be an alternate as needed, um, until that space is filled. Um, so they're also gonna be looking for, uh, members, Ryan, for twenty twenty-five, so I'll talk to them about that too. There's a few people who are interested. Um, we've been updated webpage on the borough website and our twenty twenty-five meetings are all scheduled, you can do those there. Um, at the Board of Health meeting last week, which was also the last Board of Health meeting for this year, we, um, went together, or went together, went through an epidemiology report that had been put together, um, through grad speed and on Hopewell Borough, uh, it was really interesting and two of the things that came up as concerns in our, in our small town would be mental health and then obesity, but it was, it was a pretty involved, um, study that she did, just wanted to see if we can get it up onto the Board of Health website, because it was, it was really neat to go through. Um, and good news on the, uh, Board of Health side, I know at every meeting I say that they're incredibly understaffed, they made some hire. Um, they have a community health nurse who started just on November fourth and a health secretary has been hired. So hopefully some of the projects that have been put on hold and some of the things that they've been trying to, uh, work on can get back on the ground, off the grounds, rather, again. Um, and lastly, as was sort of discussed a little bit earlier on about, uh, the issues on Lafayette with the, um, we, uh, was mentioned briefly, uh, to look at our ordinance on breach traps and restaurants. So, um, Doug and our health officer Gary have been, uh, working to put together, uh, a little more, um, robust, uh, ordinance on, on breach traps in restaurants, keeping them clean, making sure that they function so that our community members aren't affected. Uh, you know, if anything like this were to happen again, that there would be, uh, preemptive measures that would be put in place and also things that would be put in place if there were issues, if, if people weren't doing necessarily what they should be doing. It took me a long time to say, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you, sorry. Um, a- and as an aside, I don't know why the order is what it is, so this, the liaison reports always come at the end, I just feel like always have interesting things to say that everyone leaves by the time I get to it. I don't know if you can ever move it.
We can explore, I mean, we, 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 we changed the order already once, uh, because we used to do this at the absolute end after any attempt, any chance for someone else to make a public comment, so we, we, but, you know, sometimes do it first, it's, uh, it was worth exploring.
I, I think, I think this stuff is intriguing and no one ever goes to, gets to go to the meetings that we get to go to. That's what I was saying, I'll be very short. Uh, Fire Department responded to thirty-three calls in October, uh, EMU responded fifty-six. And they're always seeking volunteers. And currently, this is interesting, they're looking for, um, firefighter and EMU cadets and juniors, age fourteen, eighteen, you can start that young, it's very cool. And ladies auxiliary, which is fundraising, provide meals when, um, responders are on extended calls. So as I always say, you don't have to run into a burning building in order to be helpful to the fire department. Um, Senior Advisory Board, this is an FYI, there's something called Hopewell Valley Rides. If you are sixty and over, or if you're under sixty with disabilities, it's five dollars a ride, takes you all over Hopewell Valley. And apparently you can get them to take you farther for the bribe, I don't know how that works, but it's a nice, it's out there. And then Shade Tree Committee, thank you Doug for coming this morning, as I said, we talked about some side of maintenance ideas and, um, working with Sarlin Conservancy, Conservancy to create a pollinator pocket garden somewhere in the borough, so stay tuned.
Do you have this, do you have, if you have them, hand them.
I don't, she said she's in the queue.
Okay, so I will find it and, um, after, David, wanna go next? Um, get to the end. Uncharacteristically, um, so water committee, RFQ, what you mentioned earlier, but just that's, um, the next thing in the whipper process and going forward and trying to actually solicit. So we start with a request for qualifications and thank you Doug and Lisa, hammering that out, um. And, uh, and Doug, that's going out the door, um, tomorrow. And then, uh, I can't remember what the response date is, but it's a month.
Twenty-seven?
So that's the, that's what I call the beauty contest, that's where you decide you actually even eligible to, to, um, submit a proposal under the RFB. Um, and, um, I mean, we, we think, I have at least two interested parties, who knows? Um, but the RFQ is a nice start because if, you can ask some basic questions right in front of them, what's your regulatory compliance record? You know, stuff like that, and do you have the capacity? Um, and then the other thing is, um, so the, uh, the latest PFOs, uh, quarterly monitoring sample was collected on, I believe, the fourteenth of October, waiting for the results any day. Uh, we'll be sending out another tier two public notification, uh, that's actually due by the end of the month. Um, and so far, no other news on that. If we can just, if anybody knows how to get a terrain, please, uh, if it's gotten out of hand. We have at least a nor'easter by now, in the fall year, where a tropical storm or something. But, um, it's, I mean, so far, we're holding out, well, we've had to cut back production, right? Didn't wanna pump the well, I mean, it's completely dry, but it just, you don't have to have a sustainable yield then. But it recharges pretty fast once we do a terrain, so we'll see how that goes. Anyway, that's all I got. Thank you.
Um, oh, we received our speed studies on the Greater North for Transcription Management Association and it shows that the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit is actually, people have slowed down. Um, there was a more marked decrease on the west end of town where we had the lower transitional speed limit, where it went from forty-five to thirty-five. So hopefully we can work with our partners at the county and also in Hopewell Township to lower the transitional speed limit on the east side of town as well and get similar results. Um, that would be a very exciting development. The Mercer County Divisions here task force met a couple of weeks ago, talking about how to spend the Safe Goods for All grant, um, award to the county. There was talk about lowering all county roads, the statutory speed limit, and then also investing in better bike infrastructure, which was a way involved discussion. Uh, but hopefully we will get something out of that because that would be very exciting as well. And this morning, the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Committee also had a meeting, um, again, talking about safe, uh, safe streets for all funding and how to work with other organizations and municipalities to receive that funding and use that funding. That's it.
Yeah, um, probably it's, before I do my updates, pinch hit for, uh, Council of Millennials, um, Economic Development Committee will be restarting their tree decorating contest that, uh, beautified Broad Street last year, uh, working with Sarlin Conservancy. Again, this year on the project, there's a flyer that should go out, um. If you signed up for emails from the borough, you'll get it this Sunday, I believe, I'll make sure that it gets posted, so that happens. Um, and, uh, if you're informational on how to volunteer to help, um, or to, uh, be part of the program as well, uh, be thank you to our, uh, DPW, uh, for, for helping, um, put that together as well. Uh, the Green Team, um, successfully attended, I think, the first Hopewell Farmers Market as a pop-up recycling event. Uh, everyone got to see it, you could see our cool new tent. Uh, hopefully you'll see that more in the future as we, uh, are out more in community, uh, events. Um, the reminder that their annual metal recycling is coming on Saturday, February eighth, in a few months, at the Township Public Works Building. Uh, non-hazardous items are accepted, including holiday lights, uh, we'll, we'll have information on that in January. Uh, on my end, uh, first, uh, there will not be, we're gonna reschedule the Saturday office hours. It would normally fall this week, but because it's, uh, uh, the teachers convention weekend, a lot of people are away and, um, we're gonna hopefully soon have a beautifully new, uh, restored train station to welcome people back to. I'd like to, um, when we can reschedule it, perhaps do it at the train station, uh, so look for, uh, that date on, on the website and email. Um, Elizabeth Town Gas, uh, continues their street work on the west side of town, uh, slowly, unfortunately. Um, I'd say this briefly because we have our planner here, but we did receive our COA fourth round numbers and have started our work with our planner, uh, where he met, um, to start talking about what our plan will look like next year. Um, as we step into, um, dealing with, uh, the, what the state's administrative, um, counting, uh, our number is thirty-nine for the next round. And that follows an unmet need from the prior round of a hundred and one units. Um, there is a vacant land reduction that will be done, um, to that, so our ultimate expected number of units that we would take on would be less than that and our planners, I think, nodding that I'm getting it close to incorrect, um, in explanation. Um. Less, we don't know. Yes.
To be determined.
Uh, we also, uh, this evening referred our planner's, uh, recommendation for an area in need of rehabilitation program uh, for the borough. Uh, Planning Board will, will deal with that or look at that at their December meeting, it'll come back to council for adoption. Um, this would allow some, uh, and more advanced planning tools for our downtown area as well as, uh, some possible tax incentive programs that we could introduce in the new year, uh, to help with the rehabilitation and revitalization of our downtown. Um, for example, if, if someone were to look to invest in a property, um, we, normally, unfortunately, they got a added assessment tax bill once they're completed with their improvements, uh, we ease that burden over the first five years to not, you know, punish someone for investing in a property. Um, so I'm excited to, to soon have those tools, uh, to work with. A lot of, uh, meetings for me, including that the, the, the mayors of Mercer County met this quarter, uh, in Lawrence and, uh, another couple of productive meetings with our new planning director at Mercer County, Maria Connolly. She's, uh, connected us with, or starting to connect us with some economic, um, incentive tools, uh, that I'm looking forward to getting more information on and passing along to our, our businesses. Uh, a couple of really important thank yous, I wanna thank the Hopewell Presbyterian Church, uh, for their day of service this past week. Uh, whole team of people, um, uh, did a lot of great things around town, uh, including some maintenance at some of our parks. So I'm really thankful to everyone involved with that. Um, also, uh, the blood drive that was done this month, excuse me, last month in October, memory of, um, some wasco. Um, always appreciative of the volunteers who put that together. Uh, everyone who participated in the Chummy's Walk, uh, this past weekend. And I think Gary mentioned, but, uh, we have that second proclamation for the Second Calvary Baptist Church. Congratulations on their anniversary. Uh, lastly, I wanna thank, uh, as many times as I can, but Hopewell Township Police Chief, uh, Rosso. Um, in this month's reporting of their activities, uh, Council President Weaver talked about the speed study that showed that there's been some incremental, um, changes. They're hard to see, um, in speed on Broad Street, particularly if you live on it or look at it every day. I spoke to at least three people this week alone who, um, you know, have, uh, legitimate comments about the, the progress, um, but, uh, the speed study shows there's been some progress and I'm really appreciative of the Hopewell Township Police Department, uh, who has increased year over year forty-two percent the number of summonses and tickets and thirty-four percent traffic stops. So they have really been listening and, um, helping us, uh, to try to slow the speed down on these streets and, um, very appreciative of their, their partnership with us.
Um, at the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission this morning, we were talking about, you know, the effort, the dedication effort, working with the Township Police Department and everyone there was so surprised at how good of a relationship we have with them and how eager they were to participate with us. So we are very fortunate to get to work with them.
Thank you, everyone, uh. Excuse me, Doug, anything you wanna add from your report as a?
Yeah, uh, there's some more funds becoming available for the New Jersey Stock Trucks Trust. So we passed the resolution to make an application for that. And I think we'll put in for the entire two hundred eighty-one thousand, uh, that is the borough's portion of the, of the restoration. So we're lucky enough to get some of that or all that, that, you know, really let that out of there for us. Um, and just to piggyback on what David said about the drought, we reduced our water, uh, pumping about forty percent. So you know what that means, we're using water from New Jersey American Water. So we did see a slight increase in our, in our bill last month. Uh, but so as, you know, so as we get some more, so as we get some rain, uh, we'll be able to go back.
And of course, the new rates hit, so there's a fourteen percent rate by New Jersey America, yeah, September.
And we passed the resolution to award the contract for heart. Uh, that was a great job, Bob did a great job on that, we had two phases and it was very, very, it was a heavy lift and Bob did a great job on that, we got the contract awarded, uh, we were able to put in some, um, alternates, so we'll be able to do the Belgium block, the whole length of the road. So that's gonna be, we'll get rid of the curve that's there and it's gonna look great, so thank you Bob, that was terrific. And, um, we started to get, met with, uh, Attorney Maddox and Mr. Ackerman to start moving the, uh, dark sky ordinance forward and be doing some work on that and Lisa's helping us with that, so that's great, that's all I have.
Thank you Doug, and thank you Doug just for your report, but, I mean, you're doing, Reggie, and, you know, we have an unusually high number of our professionals here, just thank you all for, you guys impressed. Uh, with that, I'll open the meeting to our second, um, public comment session, so anyone, uh, in person, feel free to come to the front and then I'll, uh, make the same announcement for those online after we're done with in person. I, I'll keep it brief, it's late, David Waldman, he's prospect, two things. One, um, regarding the pollination thing, um, which I'll get to second, and then my first point about the redevelopment, um, plan, um. I heard some, what I thought were very thoughtful comments, but then I also watched, unless I missed it, a very quick vote to adopt it as drafted and I'm wondering, I didn't hear any discussion was, um, are those comments gonna be taken into account or are we done, missed, ignored or whatever, or what do you think about what comments you heard, for example, from, um, the representative from the watershed incident, it was on policy, it just seemed to happen really quickly. So I'm just curious.
Um, I think that the, we acknowledged everyone's comments, that they were very thoughtful and, um, we appreciate that everyone offered them. And then we talked about, um, most of the concerns would be addressed in the site plan.
Uh huh, okay, and I guess what I'm getting at is that, unless I misheard, it sounded like some of your comments, I'm blanking on your name, yeah.
Susan.
Susan, Susan's comments were specifically strong recommendations that the language be incorporated there rather than be taken into account later in the site plan review. I'm just wondering if that was something you guys thought about. Unless I misunderstood that, it sounds like.
No, no.
It's something here, as, as, if this is getting a little bit further into the redevelopment, I'm gonna travel with you. I'm gonna hand the gavel over to. Yeah, I'm sorry. Chris, no, 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 nothing, you don't, so I, I, I'll, I'll be back. I'm just curious why during the session, I know it was thoughtful and I, 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 I grant you all that and I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just wondering, um, what consideration, because I didn't hear any discussion amongst you guys.
What consideration led you to conclude that our emphasis, for example, that some of these would more importantly and more appropriately be incorporated into the into the plan, be not done, and you just seem to vote that, okay, so.
We discussed it with our professionals, and our professionals said that this would be covered in the site plan.
We we all had a chance to read a memorandum that was submitted to us by Susan Bristol, outlining basically what was going on. And also heard it at planning board last night, so we all considered it. Okay. From from my own part, I did, I felt that some of the recommendations, they were certainly well meant, but again, it was a level of prescription that I didn't think was appropriate for the redevelopment plan, given the challenges of the site, that was my own opinion. Got it, okay. And and I mean, there are all things that that, you know, are slightly different goals, but I just, I think in some cases, a lot of them were not necessarily practical, and and, you know, again, there's a tension between you know, these are all things that we want to do, we obviously want to max maximize surface water quality and so on, but we also don't want to basically create a bunch of constraints that may just make.
Yeah, and that other gentleman was being locked in a memory, so I get that, yeah.
And there's no good, perfect answer to any of that.
Oh, we maybe we didn't mention that we had received both of their comments previous before.
You did, and I blanked on that, but yeah, that, yeah, I understand, thank you. On the pollinator garden, I sat on the executive board for the state of New Jersey for several years, and was the past president and the president for a certain number of years of a local chapter of the Beekeeping Association, so, and I'm also a backyard borough beekeeper, so I am happy to help or assist if you're interested.
We would love it, we would love it.
Prescribing and laying out and selecting what plants might be. I've I've done a lot of pollinator gardens for different. Municipalities and stuff, so.
I will, I can find out the next time they're coming to a meeting.
I'd love to help if I can.
I would love it.
Yeah.
And I will get, don't leave, I'll get your.
Yeah, 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 great, thank you all, yeah, thank you, sure.
Anyone else for public comment about Hopewell fifty-seven, I'm trying to get the the wording right, he pointed fifty-seven here.
Hopewell fifty-seven.
And you were going to say something earlier when we'd already closed the floor, you raised your hand at one point, I didn't want to, you know, want you to have an opportunity.
It was just, I know you've mentioned a few times that there hasn't been a lot of interest in redevelopment, I think, it's at six, not most.
Your name.
Oh.
I'm sorry?
Your name.
Andrew.
Andrew. Three, three, including the current one, three people, seriously, in about a decade, yeah.
And so the the current one. It came with the, you know, he has to have done some research and expense perhaps to figure out what it would cost and to develop the, what might cost to demolish it, build it. And so that was probably not on the back of a napkin, I probably had put some expenses into that. And that would be the same for some, any prior developer, so I guess that was under the prior zone, however, when it was still, is that service zone too?
Right, yeah, the service zone, still is actually, right, Joanna, isn't that correct, the service zone still exists, but this is essentially an overlay specific to the property.
I mean, would would not it have been possible to have attracted more developer interest had it been rezoned maybe at a more restrictive level initially? So someone might not be willing to put in the expense of developing a proposal thinking, well, this town is a bunch of two-story houses, historic, they're not going to go for anything out of sight, I'm not going to waste my time coming up with a proposal. Whereas to get this rezoned, whereas if it had been rezoned, say, mixed use or lower density residential first, maybe that would have attracted some more interest.
Well, it's an interesting question. You have a lot of really thoughtful questions, I have to say, I always look for original, because this is good, I won't draw it on too long, but again, I was talking about that tension between a redevelopment plan that's more or less restricted, I mean, and and one of the things, I I've heard cases, and Joanna, she knows all about this, but I mean, there are times when sometimes a town will put together a redevelopment plan, they'll have a thing of like, this is what we want, and they have this very detailed thing, and I mean, maybe it's a downtown, it works, but they may be coming up with a redevelopment plan for something that nobody wants to build, that the market doesn't respond to it.
Yeah.
So for at least a decade, where we worked was, I mean, I think the property owner was interested in any offers, I mean, it could have been, well, maybe it's a a mixed use, you know, retail and apartment, or maybe something else. And the only ones, the only people that ever expressed any serious interest, it was always housing, it never had any other component to it, and it was always multifamily housing, as far as I know. And so, and we kind of did this chicken and egg thing with the redevelopment process by designating it as an area in need of redevelopment in twenty sixteen. Yeah, you should know this by now, but that was essentially an invitation to any property owner, not just this property, but anywhere within the service zone, if you have an idea and you'd like to do something, come talk, and we'll see what we can do, and so, for example, the owner of the lumberyard intended right then to move for, it took a while for that to happen, but, you know, definitely had it, and so essentially, what you're trying to do with 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 the designation as an area of redevelopment is create sort of fertile ground for ideas as opposed to if you were only working under the existing zoning, where you would have to have a million variances to do anything that didn't fit the existing. You could also rezon the property, or rezon the area and and build those into it, but but I think the way we approached it, Joanna, just cut me off at any time, but I mean, it was, you know, see, we were, we weren't in a position to do the studies to find out what the market would support. The only way to really do that was to kind of send the message that, and that's sort of what the property owner did, so.
Well, and and even before that, in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, we did have a lot of conversations about rezoning the entire service zone. And we looked at what that might entail and what type of uses, and and it all sounded really great, but we kept coming back to the diversity of the lots in the service zone, now when you do zoning, it applies universally, so it applies to all of the lots universally. And the challenge with redevelopment sites is they're very unique, and so no matter what zoning we could contemplate that would address what we needed to address on Hopewell fifty-seven was not going to be applicable to the remaining zone and and vice versa, so that became a challenge. And again, the market was already tapped out on a lot of commercial space and a lot of things that we were thinking about at the time. And that's about the time when we saw the demand for residential takeoff and 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 sustained for for over a decade now, so, yeah, we did look at, we did look seriously at rezoning that area. But it would have resulted in what we call spot zoning, and we couldn't, we couldn't do that.
Yeah, I mean, I was just thinking, if you had rezoned it even what's already there.
Right, and and it's the first thing you look at, because that's the easier process, yeah, yeah.
I guess a developer might come in and say, all right, maybe I'll try to put four luxury single-family houses there, but oh, it's going to cost so much to demolish this, they won't sell, they're not going to make a profit, but I'm going to have to ask for more. But, you know, this developer took the chance and asked for a lot, it seems to be getting it, but maybe if another developer, not so bold, might have come in and said, oh, if I only need to go from here to here, I can do it, but right now, we're at service.
Yeah, the density, right, the density wasn't specific to this redevelopment, it was specific to the ten years of concept plans that have been floated on this project.
The others were all coming with the same sort of density or higher.
Actually, higher, yeah, he was actually one of the lower ones that we have now.
Lower end. There was also, wasn't there, I was correct, but wasn't there an entity that was a nonprofit that was looking to get affordable housing?
We had, we had a nonprofit that was looking to develop there, that would have been mixed workforce housing and a higher set aside for affordable housing. But they needed in the range of one hundred and sixty-five to one hundred and seventy-five units. And they went and ran the numbers and found that they couldn't even get financing for that.
So they couldn't even make it work with that number?
Right.
Wow. Which is interesting, because it's just.
When they're on a different, you know.
Yeah, obviously different, obviously, but anyway, but it kind of gets to this what's possible, and, you know, we don't have a crystal ball to know, but we're getting a pretty good idea of what the range is, I think. Thank you, this is interesting question.
If there are any more for?
One last one, so. Yeah, just go fast, is, and I know, I know, because I was on planning board, that things will come up in planning board, so for example, the setback that I'm still pushing for, which didn't happen. It might happen in planning board, just because the elevation change might dictate steps. We all know houses back right across the street from me, on that side of the street in Lafayette, two of the houses, thirty-two and thirty-four Lafayette, have concrete steps, we've seen this in Hopewell, here, three or four steps, and then you get up to your ladder, and then you have your entry to the house, so just if you think about the math, four feet, four feet to walk, four feet, you're already over ten. So we may get the twelve to fifteen foot setback just because of the elevation change.
That's right, and so what we're looking at when we look at the bulk standards is really just the limit, so that's
Right.
The furthest we are considering them pushing.
And I've encouraged everybody, please attend the planning board meetings.
Yes.
Because it's not over yet, we still have got a lot.
Just starting, like, real details, I'm just starting.
Good evening, I'm Chrissy Knight, I live on Mercer Street in the borough. I want to start just by saying thank you for the hard and earnest work that you've done on Hopewell fifty-seven, and it's clear that you've put a lot of time and energy and thought into it, and, you know, hearing from Tara about the things that you have included in it that weren't really visible until she reported on them, so I'm glad that she shared that. I think one of the things I want to highlight that Susan was pointing to is that some of the things that she called out were things that the developer already says that you would do. And so, David, to your point about not wanting to institute those because they would be constraints, they're things that he already said he was going to do, so that's just something to think about. In line with that, David, when you were talking about the stream and the riparian zone, and you said that that was fifteen percent of the of the land right there, it's my understanding that the agreement is that it'd be fifteen percent open space. And so what happens if the stream with the corridor and the riparian zone is fifteen percent of the lot? Does that, does that take care of the open space requirement that was set out in the redevelopment plan?
So our opens, I think there's a little confusion on what the open space is, so our current ordinance has a definition for open space, it's not specific to deed restricted land, it's basically land that is undeveloped. So it's not, it can be recreation area, it can be it can be just plain left open space. But that in combination within your other requirements, so you're you're capped at seventy-five percent impervious coverage, that mix that ensures that actually twenty-five percent of the site remains, you know, not covered in compacted, or so, so I think there's a little bit of a confusion, because we have to, we're looking at our current ordinance and those definitions for open space, what we use for site plans is a little bit different than I think we should. I think what we're thinking about open space, which is like deed restricted and just for recreation or just for, you know, conservation, it's really just anything that's not covered. So I don't know if that helps at all.
Would it be, yeah, I mean, kind of, so then, does that mean that aside from the stream, we could expect that ten percent of the property would be pervious?
Right. Thank you.
Anyone else in person for public comment? So we'll take it over to the Zoom, please raise your hand if you're on Zoom and you would like to make some comment. Seeing none in person or on Zoom, I will take a motion to close public comment. Second, third, fourth, all right. I will take a motion to adjourn, I know, I'm going to step on mine just too. I will take a motion to adjourn. I will.